To the Planning Commission meeting on this Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, 6:00 PM at City Hall, 20 North Main Street, Alpine, Utah. Would like to welcome with us here from the city Ryan Robinson and Jason Judd and Marla Fox, who is dutifully taking minutes. Thank you, Marla. And members of the Planning Commission, we have Troy Slade, Michelle Shermer, John McKay, Jeff Davis, Suze Wittemberg, Greg Butterfield, and myself, Alan McDonald. We have a full house tonight. We appreciate everybody being here. We love an engaged citizenry. And going over the agenda, I do notice that we have several public hearings. So some of you may be here for all of them, some of you may be for one of them, or two of them, or three of them, but it does look like, just so everybody is aware, we have several action items, and several of those include public hearings. The first public hearing that we will have, not immediately, of course, we've got some business to take care of, but will be the 242 and 243 Red Pine rezone request. That's up first. Second is a public hearing required for an equipment upgrade on the wireless cell tower. I'm sure everybody's here for that. Those are always exciting. Then finally, or the third one is a public hearing on a proposed code change for the definition of a produce stand. And then finally, we'll have a public hearing for a, it looks like a, oh, just a proposed code amendment. So I don't think that's one of the most exciting items either. But, so that is the order, just so everybody knows and understands. So anyway, let's just start with general business. And that will be a prayer, which will be offered by Michelle Shermer, followed by Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Suze Wittemberg.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for the many blessings we've been given. We're grateful for this opportunity to live in Alpine and to talk about items that are important to us as we enjoy this beautiful city. And we're grateful for all of our blessings. We're grateful to thee, and we say the same things to thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
...............................................................
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Suze. All right. Ryan reports and presentations. It notes none. Has anything come up? Okay. Reports, presentations, anything by, you know, any member of the Planning Commission? Okay, good. Let's get right into the action items and discussion items. The first action item is a review of the proposed commercial building sign for a business known as The Hidden Gem, located at 62 South Main Street. Ryan, can you introduce that to Boris?
Yep. So we just received an application to update the sign. It's in the former Links and Kings, and I think it's called Reflection Salon. They're on Main Street. Those are foreburned inhabitants of the building. They want to update one of the signs to this Hidden Gem. Seems like they do hair and all that fun stuff. So as part of our code, we just have size requirements. Looks like they meet that. It's only 32 square feet. Will be smaller than what's existing on the building. This is only for one side. It's at north side of the building as well. So as part of this review, is staff, we've reviewed it. You can see these one through, one through six is really what staff looks at to make sure there's... Lighting is okay. It's attached to the building. There's only one per business, different things like that. One of the things that Planning Commission looks at is this number seven, the size, the color, size, number, lighting and placement of business signs are subject to Planning Commission approval consistent with the Gateway Historic District Guidelines. So that's mainly what we're looking at here today. Just to show, it's a black sign with white writing. Lighting comes from behind the sign, similar to what we've asked for in our lighting requirements. You can see it just going to replace this former sign that was there for the salon. Pretty basic. Happy to take any questions. There's no public hearing as part of this. This is administrative decision, and you guys are the approving body on this. So take that responsibility for what it is. But yeah, happy to take or answer any questions or comments on the sign. Yeah, there's two different sides there. So this is just the one side of it. I think it's about 1,900 square feet.
So it's not replaced? It's joining Kings and...
It'll replace just this side, just the, just this one sign here. I don't know what's going to go on the other side. I don't know if they've had any business come in, but this is just to replace the one side.
Okay, Ryan. So as far as just ordinance specifications, the sign, the proposed sign checks all the boxes. Remind us again, what are the Historic District Guidelines that we need to think about a review as we look at the proposed sign?
Yep. So primarily, and they're attached in your packet, primarily for this, it would be colors, it would be material, it would be things like that. We had one, I don't know if you guys remember, we had one a couple of years ago come in that was more of a reflective material, didn't fit in with kind of the other signs or what's laid out here. But that's really what we're looking at as far as the historic guidelines, is just the material itself, kind of color, the look of it more than anything. We don't have a chapter that's just straight up signs, but just to kind of get a look of what we're thinking. This is probably the closest that we would have to anything that was on there.
Can you just back up on page six? So I think that's... That, okay, no, yep, sorry.
Chapter six, yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, chapter six, yeah. I guess that's page eight. So that, that Bella sign right there, I know that was a picture taken sometime in the past. Is that sign still there?
No, no. This is the...
I think you showed us a picture of the sign that's currently on that building.
Yep, yep. Yep. So it's these two, it's these two signs right now. Two separate buildings. When you go in the door, there's two different. So this will replace this one on the right, on my right, this salon there.
It looks, at least in appearance, consistent with the sign on the left. What's the material of this Hidden Gem sign? I'm sure it was in there, but...
That's a good question. Oh, is it this acrylic? Yeah, yep, right there. Right there.
So Ryan, you said it was a backlit sign?
Yeah, so they'll have, if you look at this night view one, it'll be lit up from the back. What we didn't want in there is this number, number two, whereas the signs may have lighting positioned behind them to create a halo or outline effect. We're okay with that. We just didn't want the annoying ones that look like Vegas.
It looked like in the picture that it had some lights in the front of it. Is that...
No, no. So those downlights, I haven't heard of them or moving them, but they won't be used as part of the lighting for the sign.
Okay. Looks like one of them has halfway self-removed.
Yeah.
Or at least on its way out. So, okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Ryan, for the introduction. All right. Any questions? Any members of Planning Commission or discussion on the sign application?
Does it matter if they're symmetrical? Do they look exactly the same size?
You mean that sign with the one on the left? I don't think they have to be.
Same colors, one smaller.
Just one smaller.
Yeah.
Ryan, you mentioned in your overview that this is on the north side of the building. This looks like the east side of the building. Is that right?
No, it's the north side, isn't it? Oh, yeah. Yeah, it'll be on the, sorry. Yep, yep, east side of the building. Yep, facing Main Street there. You had me confused there for a minute, John. Wait a minute.
If you make a mistake, John will catch you.
Will catch it, yep. Yep. North side of the building facing the east side, yep.
Do we know how bright it is or anything, Ryan?
That's one of the things we can look at as far as lumens, three lumens. So if it appears too bright or it looks like that, we can test it and make sure it's not. That's one of the things you can do for the, well, it's part of the condition, or part of the standards anyways, that it be below that. So that's something they'll have to, they'll have to meet that standard.
I think this design is what we're specifically asking not to be used. This looks like a backlit box.
So I think what we were looking at more is that the lights that shine through it. So if there was, if there was like holes in the sign and lights shining through it that way, this is like, I believe the letters itself light up.
Well, I think it's just because it's a... It's one layer of vinyl with the white lettering as part of that overlay. And then there is a light source inside of a box that's causing that to light up. That is specifically prohibited.
Yeah. Yeah. So when we looked at it, it looked like it would have that position behind him to create that halo or outlining effect. But that's something that is part of the review process. You can say that the lighting needs to ensure that.
We kind of, we went through this process previously, and we kind of defined the halo effect as lettering that is removed from the face of the sign. And then the light source is actually projecting into the building, giving a halo effect to the cutout. Yeah. And this isn't any different than the State Farm sign. The same concept.
Yeah.
Which is what we're trying to get around.
I haven't really looked at the State Farm sign enough to go off the top of my head.
It's just a light box with vinyl in the front.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you might be right.
Yeah. No, I'm right. Yeah.
You guys do what you want with it, but it violates everything we've worked on for the last two years.
Exactly.
Because I think the backlighting they were talking about is like, just kind of lit from the back and then the signs in front, but like, it's more just sort of glowing around it. Like, it's not internally in a box, you know, like tube light type things.
Yeah.
The furniture store, what's it called?
The Ezra?
Yeah.
Ezra Lee?
Oh, You and Him?
You and Him. You and Him. That's the classic example. It's got a plate with the letters cut out, and then a back source light that projects into the building. And they had to change that to be compliant. They came with something similar to this.
Yep.
Yeah.
I do not know...
I don't know if they are actually here. It could be any one of them. But, no, that's something that is part of your recommendation. You can say, it's got to make sure that lighting is what it, you know, that halo effect rather than the cutout.
So, but we're not making a recommendation on this. This is a good city council, right?
No, yeah, you're the approval. Yeah, part of your review.
So this is, this is just, this is a motion to approve, table, or deny. So, John, my just, my feeling is that if you feel strongly that it doesn't meet the ordinance, and it probably doesn't, then I think we could entertain a motion to deny and perhaps insert those findings. Why? Or anybody else who feels similarly?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to deny the application, finding that it is not a halo-lighted sign. That is in fact, it is a box-lighted sign. And recommend for the applicant to come back with a sign design that looks something more similar to the Hemmon...
Hemmon Ha?
You and Him.
He Ha?
Hemmon Hugh?
Hemmon Hugh. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, we kind of buggered up your motion there with the jokes, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay, but I think we got the gist of it. So we have a motion to deny by John. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second by Jeff. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion is unanimous. All right. Let's move on to the next item then, which is... Potential rezone of 243 East Red Pine Drive and 242 East First South, from the CR 20,000 zone to the business commercial zone and the senior housing overlay zone. So this is a public hearing. So how we'll handle that, if anybody is here to... Wants to get up and talk about this when we have the public hearing. What we'll do first is have Ryan introduce the topic. And when he's finished with that, we may have some questions for him, perhaps not. But after that, I'll go ahead and open this particular item up for a public hearing. And at that point, if anybody has any commentary on that, then that would be the time. So Ryan, you want to go ahead and introduce this item for us?
Sure, sure. Yeah. So with this one, the senior housing overlay zone, we have a requirement that the base zone has to be business commercial. So this is a two-part rezone. One, they'll need to rezone from the CR 20,000 to the business commercial, and then again to the senior housing overlay zone. So this is what they've proposed. So far, again, the address is the, Alan has read, or the address is part of this. The, I'm going to back up a little bit on this. Nope, we're going to go this way. So with this, this is the current zoning right now with the two parcels. If you've been on the property, there's that creek that breaks them up. Anything south of that creek is the CR 20,000 zone. North of that's TR 10,000. They just want to rezone the CR 20,000 part of that to this business commercial and then to the senior housing overlay zone. It's abutting an existing senior housing next to it and commercial that way as well. So yeah, it looks like from our review of this, there's 24 units on 3.21 acres. Meets the minimum requirement. You have to have at least two acres with no more than 32 units, with no more than eight units per acre. Meets that requirement. Some of the things that the plant, or the code says that you guys should look at as you're reviewing these are listed there, one through eight. In harmony, I'm not going to go through them all, but just as we're looking at, does it fit in with the general area and the uses around it? The property to the west is an existing senior housing unit like we just talked about. Everything around it is in, like I said, that CR 20,000 zone, so they could have half-acre lots. Some of them are half-acre, and there's a few that are one-acre around it. If you guys are recommending, making a recommendation on this to the city council, if you do make, if it is approved for the rezone, they'll come back for a, as part of the subdivision process. At that time, we can look more at setbacks, utilities, landscaping requirements, different things that way. Right now, we're just really looking at the use, as if this should be rezoned for a senior housing use. But like I said, they'll have more come back later. Like Alan said, this is a public hearing. We notice it accordingly. And again, this is a legislative decision, so up to you guys to make that recommendation. So any questions, comments? I'd be happy to go with those.
Yeah, quick question on process then. So you mentioned that there's kind of a two-step process on the rezone. Right? And first is from residential to commercial, business commercial, and then from business commercial to kind of the senior housing overlay. Do we have to do that in two separate motions?
You could do it as one motion, to do it as to the business commercial and then to the senior housing overlay on top of that.
Okay. So assuming, we'll make a recommendation, because this is a legislative decision. It'll go to the city council, so we'll make a recommendation. Assuming that it greenlights at city council, it will eventually then come back to us for architecture, materials, et cetera?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Ryan, anything else on that?
Nope.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ryan? Okay. All right. This is a public hearing, so we will go ahead and open this up to public hearing. Just a couple of quick things. If you do want to come up and make a statement, please limit yourself to three minutes, and I think Ryan will start a timer right there. And I can't remember if there's a red light on the podium or not, but come to the podium. Just state your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Otherwise, let's just all be kind and respectful, and no booing, no hissing, no clapping, no stomping feet or otherwise. But we appreciate all you being here. And anybody that would like to comment on this particular item, then feel free to come up to the podium. We'll go ahead and start that public hearing now.
This is on Kimberly Bryant Cameron. Want to thank you guys first. I know how hard of a job this is, and it's a thankless job, and this is where the nuts and bolts of the community happen. So I'm actually not here as a neighbor. I'm not close. I live at 583 Blackcock Lane. I'm here actually more, when I found this was coming for, as a past city council member. So I've sat up there and been on that side and was heavily involved over 16 years as a council member into approving the current 55 and up. So it's something that I feel like I've done a lot of and know more about than I probably wish I ever did. But now, as just a citizen, going back to just a regular citizen, I realize how important these communities are. I've seen how well they work and what an aged community we are becoming. I was born and raised in Alpine. I was tiny. I raised my kids here, and now I'm old. More importantly, I have an 87-year-old mother that I can't get into a place close by. She served this community. My father was a justice of the peace here. She can't stay here because there's not enough places for her to be. The River Meadows is full. The other ones are extremely expensive. From what I understand, these are not going to be quite as expensive. They make great neighbors. Talking to the community members 20 years ago, pardon? Oh. Well, thank you. Tell him. I hope he likes me.
Jen and I did think that was a nice thought.
Been on both sides of the fence on being liked or not up there. So I just think it's a, like I said, I'm not a neighbor. I understand that zone changes are huge. I understand it, and I know how hard it is. And I hope you do take it really seriously. And I hope you do your due diligence. I have no doubt you will. However, there are times that it is very beneficial to the city to have this. We have such a traffic issue. I moved away for four years, moved back. People think that traffic is bad here. Move out on 2100 in Lehigh, and you'll know what a bad traffic is. But we don't want that. One good thing about a 55 and up is, you know, you'll have one to two cars. My husband and I retired. We go most places together. But you'll have two cars instead of other, you know, four or five cars, three cars. So I think that's a benefit. They make great neighbors. In talking to the citizens, people want this in Alpine. Like I said, I'm not a neighbor. I respect the neighbors that are here. It affects them. That's usually who comes to public hearings. I don't have a dog in this at all. I just think that it's an important thing, and I really hope, when I saw it on the agenda, I just have so many people that still call me and say, are we ever going to get 55 and up? I don't know. I don't know. There's a few pieces of property. I just wanted to come tonight just to say, I hope you'll really consider it. I hope you'll understand that this is something, as an aged community, we need. I hope that I can stay here. My yard's too big anyway. But I think the citizens, people who made this community what it is, should have the opportunity to stay here in smaller homes and smaller yards. So thanks.
Thank you, Kimberly.
I'm Jeanette Bepes. I'm the HOA president of the River Meadows 55 and older community, which will be right next door to them. We've considered this over and over again. We've had our... Oh, sorry. We've had our board meeting and talked about it. We've had our annual meeting and talked about it. We've talked with the pages, and there's been some changes that were made that we are approving of it. We have voted on it, and we do approve of this new 55 and older community going in with us. And we would welcome them into our HOA after they had made some changes to their plans. We do have some concerns of traffic on Red Pine. Cars being parked on both sides of the street, going every which way. It's very hard to get through there at times with more than one car. You just can't pass another car. But I think if even the curbs were painted red for a certain portion of that, it would help so that we can go up and down that road. When school's on, it's a nightmare. It's backed up clear up around Peterson Park and both ways. And I don't know that you can put stoplights anywhere, but we really need to consider something with the traffic because it is very bad. We've appreciated the pages. They've communicated with us and kept us informed of what they would like to do, but have left it up to us to make that decision. So I'm just telling you that the 55 and older community of River Meadows, right next to them, is approving this with the changes that were made. We don't want a pickleball court, which was on the plan because of the noise wherever, community of retirees. And we have a lot of older people that go around our loop in wheelchairs, and they need to have not much traffic on our roads. And that was a change that they had made. They wanted to use ours originally. We told them, no. So they did put the road down the middle that will help the traffic. There is an exit that goes into our roads, but we would like to sign that to have it as an emergency exit only, so they have a way out if needs to be. But we are approving it as the River Meadows 55 and older community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Very helpful. Jeanette, could you...
So Jeanette, there's no discussion about combining the two projects into one HOA? Is that right?
Yeah, I think she said that they were going to kind of merge this into the HOA.
So you're going to annex this project into your HOA? Okay, so you'll manage it?
As a board, we have approved them to go ahead, and if this does go through, we will include them in our HOA.
And all the changes that you've mentioned are on the plan that we're seeing? Ryan?
I think so.
Shows gazebo instead of pickleball court now.
Oh, okay, in the back.
Jeanette, does your HOA have any restrictions on whether they're owned or occupied or rental homes?
I'm sorry?
Does your HOA have any restrictions on whether they can be rental homes or must be owned or occupied?
Not really. There's about 10 homes in our units that are rentals. So there's about 14 that are owned.
Out of how many?
Pardon me?
Out of how, 14 versus 10?
We just want them to be able to go by our HOA rules and abide with the things that we have put in place.
Can I ask you something? This is a really morbid question, and I'm sorry. With the traffic, and we talk a little bit about the traffic here, don't we? Because we have all the moms parking up there, and we have an office there as well, and we get it. Here's the thing. This is my, always my concern, is the safety. Like, for the senior citizens that are living there, we have to be able to get emergency vehicles.
I'm sorry, I can't.
You hear me? Oh, sorry.
I forgot my hair needs.
Okay, so we need to get emergency vehicles to your facility.
Yes.
Right? So this is, I hate asking this, but just how often is that occurring? Just give me, just give us a general number. Is that daily emergency vehicles? Yeah. Like, just...
Ambulances.
Thinking about with your traffic situation, are they, is that a daily thing? Or what would you estimate?
They usually don't come down there very often, maybe two or three a week. But they can't barely get by. When there's trailers parked on one side and trucks and cars parking every which way on both sides, it's very hard for a vehicle to get by.
And then they can go up to, they can go up on ridge to exit.
You can, but...
So there is a little bit of an in and out.
When schools...
Oh, the schools are a whole different...
I mean, they're still backed up, cleared back around the park. So there needs to be something done with the traffic, but...
And are there turnarounds? Are there ways for them to turn around inside the facility, inside where they're housed?
No.
Just that loop? It's all on the street.
Yep.
Quick question. So when your HOA rules, so I'm assuming that one of the rules is they have to be 55 and over?
Yes.
And can they have kids?
Yes.
So of any, like, they can have kids? Okay.
Yes, but we have had some issues with kids that are 55 and older, with younger kids that have caused some issues, but we've worked with them. younger kids that have caused some issues. But we've worked with them. We're in the same ward. We're friends. We're family. We take care of each other. So we learn to work with them and help them become what they need to be as far as neighbors are concerned. That is an issue with the new one because they're in a different state. But we're working on that.
Troy, our code on this, too, allows you to have one person under fifty-five living in the
Oh, so we also have, okay.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Jeanette.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Troy Page. I live at 527 South High Bench Road here in Alpine. A little over sixty years ago, in nineteen sixty-five, Leroy and Darlene Page, my parents bought that place right on First South that goes back through Red Pine Drive. Best decision they ever made. We were able to, they raised six kids here on that property, and a few of the kids have been able to stay and raise their families here as well. Over the years, the neighborhood certainly has changed. Apple orchards became homes, and Dad's was the only place that had stuff that didn't grow, cars and junk. So we, but we've seen the neighborhood change completely, and we had people move in around us, and it's been a great deal. But back in two thousand and eight, the city came to my dad and said they wanted to push Red Pine through his property, on the south end of the property. And to support the growth, they needed more roads and different access and regress for those homes. So he claimed deed the property for them to put Red Pine through, and then he sold later the acre that existed on the south end of the property, leaving him with what you're seeing now. When my father passed away a year ago, a little over a year ago, the responsibility of figuring out what happens with the property fell to the six kids. And I can tell you, the discussions were many, and the main point of the discussion was, well, the two things was, what's best for Alpine and what's best for the neighbors that are right next to it. And I can tell you, we have some awesome, awesome neighbors that were so good to my parents. And they include the Lanums, who live in the Chamberlains old place, the Smiths, the Pollens, the Jensen's, the DeLegros, the Ambules, and now the McEwans. I don't know Mike that well. But those, and then the Fifty-Five and Over home existing development. But those are the people that we were most concerned about. We didn't want to do anything to negatively affect them. So going through this process, we looked at all of our different options, and we truly, back in two thousand and eight, when the first development was done, the developer, I'm sorry, can I have one more minute?
Sure.
The developer actually had a plan that included the back piece of my dad's property as part of the Fifty-Five and Over. They had eighteen units that would go on that back piece of the property. So my dad was really excited about that. Now, I would love to buy that place and keep it as it is, but I'm too old. I can't take care of four acres and a big house. So I'm not going to do that. But we personally feel, as a family, that the best thing for Alpine and the neighborhood is to put more Fifty-Five and Over retirement homes there, like we've proposed. But one thing I would ask, and I've talked to a lot of the neighbors, and their biggest concern is, you get this rezoned commercial, and it gets rezoned, and you get the approval, and then you crumple up the paper that shows what you were going to do, and you throw storage units or a restaurant or something because it's a zone commercial. And pardon my ignorance, but is there any way in the rezoning definition that you can say, yes, we are doing this, in addition to defining it with the Fifty-Five and Over overlay, can you say that if it goes any other direction, we go back to residential or something? I just want the neighbors to know that we're not going to do that.
Yeah, the brief answer for that, Troy, is that, yes, we do, when we look at a rezone, we like to see the project that underlies the rezone, the reason for the rezone request. And we typically will make our recommendation to the city council conditional upon approval of the underlying project. So the answer to that is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Troy, with that overlay zone, too, you can only do the senior housing in there. So even though we do, the base zone has to be commercial, with that overlay on top of it, you can only do, you can only do senior housing.
Okay, perfect. So that, I think that will give our neighbors some comfort, and certainly it will be me, because I don't want to say something and then something else happens after the fact. So thank you for that. So, you know, we request the zone change, and we think that we've done this responsibly, and that it's a great plan. So I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, please.
Yeah, I was going to say, Troy, if you could maybe just hang out there for a second while we've got you at the podium. Does anybody have any questions for Troy Page, the applicant?
Troy, is it your intent to hold these properties for sale, or are you going to hold some for your own inventory as a rental project?
Well, so like I said, I would love to live on that property the way it exists, but I'm too old. So me personally, I think I'm going to have one built in my name, probably rent it for eight or ten years, and then I may end up there. So it'll be a combination of both, I think.
As you look at the map that we have?
Yes.
The concern, and it's already been brought up, and that is school and infrastructure and people coming to the school and parking and ambulances coming twice a week. As I look at it, and I don't know the width of the road, and it looks like you're going into the other fifty-five area. Have you considered less density? And instead of having homes go all the way to the back north end of it, maybe have the ability for a cul-de-sac, for a fire truck or something to turn around? Because it looks like the only, it's one way in, one way out. We've got congestion on this road that's the main entrance. You've got an ingress or egress going out through the Fifty-Five community, which already has challenges. Have you considered maybe taking this back end where you got rid of the pickle court and have a pavilion and making more infrastructure, less density, just for safety and infrastructure reasons?
Yes. So this is just one preliminary plan of what we think we could do. It may change. It, I'm sure it will. But if, I think when Jeanette was talking about the traffic, she wasn't talking on the private, on Red Pine Circle. The traffic on the Red Pine Circle, which is private, is minimal. It's the traffic on Red Pine Drive. It is, it's crazy. And like I told Mike McEwen the other day, he's the one that lives directly south of this project. I said, if you watch the traffic from my family and his family, who lives in that one single-family home there, I guarantee the traffic from those two homes are higher than all twenty-four of the existing Fifty-Five and Over homes. I guarantee it. So I don't think that the traffic that they're talking about is on these private roads. I think the traffic that she's concerned about is on Red Pine Drive.
Yeah. And my question was, you're going from seven homes, current zoning, to twenty-four?
Yep.
And then the access into, or it's just got one road going in. I don't know, the city's, you know, the one that checks all this stuff, but the width of the road, and in the event that you needed to have emergency vehicles go down there, you don't have the ability to turn around with a cul-de-sac at the end or anything?
Yep.
Does it meet infrastructure safety requirements?
Yeah, if this is approved as part of the review for the subdivision process, the fire chief takes a look at it, makes sure that they can make those turnarounds and do things that way. So that's the next step, a review that we would look at that way.
And that was part of the importance of talking to the existing HOA, to get them to agree to access that road that goes, that circles around onto Red Pine Circle. That gives you secondary access or regress by doing that.
I was going to say, Greg, I think there's, I think there's a way in from the south and another out the west, right?
Only emergency on the west, though.
Oh, is that just emergency on the west?
Will it be gated, or was it just signed?
Pardon? It'd be, it'd be secondary access. And if you look at it, nobody will use it unless, unless it's an emergency.
Is it gated, or is it just signed?
Nope, it's open. Yep.
So open access from the south and the west?
Yes.
But Ryan, at this point, we're not necessarily locked in on this platting, right?
Correct.
We're really just, it's, we're looking at the rezone, and then the density that's here that may or may not change is consistent with the senior overlay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what'd you do with all that stuff in your dad's backyard?
Oh, my goodness. See these gray hair? I didn't have any a year ago. None. Well, they've grown in. So it's been, it's been an event.
Quick question for you. I know one of the concerns from the neighbors was kind of the transition between, you know, their residential to that, maybe possibly a big tree line along there. You know, no signs out the front that, you know, says what it is and stuff. Is that something that you're?
Yes. In fact, they'd talked about, we've got a line of huge pine trees going down that east fence. And if you measure it, it's actually almost exactly what you need for the setback. So some of those can probably stay, maybe, maybe a lot of them. So those may stay. If not, we can transplant some smaller ones that will grow and grow in that area. But yes, I think that's an important thing.
And I know we'll address that when we do landscaping and stuff, but I just wanted to get that out here, so.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. Any other questions for Troy while we've got him?
The road on the north side, is that, I drove by today, and I didn't want to drive into your property. Is that all new? And you're dividing this as well into TR one thousand, ten thousand lots?
So that's already zoned quarter acre, so it will, it will remain.
But that road is new?
That road would be new so that we could access three lots.
So you could access three lots. But they're currently, are on deed as three lots? Or are they currently one big lot?
One big lot.
One big lot. And so you're also going to subdivide it into the appropriate CR ten thousand with that cul-de-sac?
Correct. That's what we would like to do.
On the other half?
That would be, that would be a separate review.
And that would be a separate thing. I was just looking at the whole thing and drove around today, and I didn't want to drive up your street.
Well, you're welcome in anytime.
So, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate your service on the planning commission. It is a lot of work, but it preserves the great character of Alpine that we all love, and I appreciate your work doing this. So thank you. I'm Matt Smith. My wife, Beth, and I live at 319 River Meadow Drive. We had a group of about fifteen of the neighbors that are close here to the subject property, and they asked me to share thoughts that we all came up with together. Some of them have actually already been addressed, and there's a few that I'd like to add. We've been neighbors with Leroy and other members of the family over the years, and we do appreciate them. And they've been great neighbors, and we're happy to know them. And so we appreciate their commitment to make this a good thing for their neighbors. And they've expressed that to us, and we believe that that's true. So we appreciate that. As a neighborhood group, though, we did talk about this can have an impact on our property values, and we want, you know, to share some thoughts that we've got with the planning commission. We appreciate that you'll go through, I don't know if it was those eight different criteria, but that are laid out in the code that you can talk through to see whether this should be approved or not, and whether you recommend it to the city council. So what we also realized is that there can be an approval with conditions. And I think that we're asking that the planning commission, if you do decide to approve this and recommend it to the city council to go forward, that you do apply some conditions. And these are kinds of the things that we're looking for. We would suggest, you know, you discussed this, Troy, reasonably sized trees along that property line to give that transition between the fifty-five-plus zone into residential. And we'd like, you know, at regular and frequent intervals along that entire east property line that's shared with the rest of the River Meadow neighborhood. We would ask that signage on the development be, you know, if it could be non-existent, we'd love that, right? We don't want it to look commercial. We want it to look residential, like our neighborhood. We would ask that there be
Do you mean like a monument, some small, is that kind of what you're thinking?
Some sort of obelisk? Yeah. No, yeah. We'd like to minimize anything like that. So we do think that there is a need for maybe a through way from River Meadow, or from Red Pine Drive through to Hundred South. People do cut through our, they've cut through all our properties for many, many years to get through there. And I talked with Troy a little bit about this, and perhaps you use the main road that's going to go in, plus a path through that CR ten thousand.
Go ahead. It sounds like you're speaking for a number of people, so, big picture, you'll save time.
I'll speak up. So we thought that that would be nice to have a pathway through there. And I don't know what the city's planning for that, but access across that creek and over to Hundred South so people can get to Creekside. You addressed, and Troy addressed, that concern that some people, that we felt of, if it's fifty-five plus, that's different than other commercial. And we had now understanding that that overlay would be a permanent part of that zoning change if it's approved. That assuages a lot of our concerns, so we appreciate that. We wouldn't want it to be anything other than the fifty-five plus. So that was important. And we, we're really glad to hear that the existing HOA would be willing to add this new property because we think the existing HOA does a great job of maintaining appearance and standards and maintenance. And we'd like to see similar standards applied to this if it is approved, so that it maintains that nice look and appearance and standards that they've upheld. And then we didn't really talk about the traffic, so I'm going to ad lib a little for my neighbors. But it is true that the Red Pine Drive traffic is brutal. I just have a rule. I never turn right. You know, I come off River Meadow Drive, I will never turn right there unless it's like midnight, and I know that no one's going to be on Main Street, because it's just not worth the brain damage and the danger of trying to turn left on that street on Main Street. So it is a real problem, and I think it's something that the planning commission ought to consider and just figure out, hey, what's the right way to deal with this? And it's, I agree with Troy, it's not caused by another, some more units there. They're not causing that problem. The traffic's coming from elsewhere. So, but it is, I mean, while you're dealing with, you know, the rezone, you might as well consider that as well. So, you know, those are the items that we discussed as our group of neighbors. Of course, we don't think we speak for everyone, but just wanted to share those thoughts with you and welcome, you know, other thoughts and opinions. And thanks for your consideration of our suggestions, and thank you for your thoughtful approach to this. And we appreciate the pages and their thoughtful approach as well.
Thank you, Matt.
Which one? My name is Bud Payne. I'm one of the first three residents of the new, or the existing twenty-five, twenty-five-unit HOA. So I've seen a lot. But I did want to comment one thing on your map that was up there a minute ago, if you wouldn't mind bringing that back up. Because I want to make sure you understand the entrance, the egress, and how we're doing that. If you look at Red Mine Circle as it's currently done, it curves around, and then it goes out by the senior living on the opposite side. So we have two ways to get in and out. The same thing is going to happen with the new homes. They will have that long ride. But if, for some reason, they need to go out the other way because of maybe construction going on, maybe something else happening, maybe they'll be doing a road, they will be able to go out the other way. So it's not like they're pinned in. We would love to have that be minimal, but at the same time, we're not, we're not crazy. We know what's necessary. Now, we do have our own current problems with sometimes people parking on each side of our streets, and it can be hard. So we actually passed an ordinance a few years ordinance a few years back to open up our streets so that the ambulances, the fire department can get in. And I lost a wife, so they were coming in, they needed to get in. And thank heavens, it wasn't, it wasn't a bad thing at that moment. Because the neighbors are pretty good when it comes to things like that. We all help each other. The same thing's going to happen on the new unit. If an ambulance needs to get in and they can't, yes, they can come the other way and go down. So, in, in other words, if a couple of people park like they shouldn't, people aren't perfect, then there's a way the ambulance can get there. They're not going to be pinned in. I like the idea. I think it was a good idea of having that little path to go all the way through. Because I know a few houses have gotten permission from Leroy to do that to get to the park on the opposite side of the street. And that's a sweet idea. Now, Red Pine, I probably drive it more than anybody because I'm active. I'm very active. And I will say that when I come out, I don't ever come out when it's school time. Because if I make a right turn, I know I will never make a left turn. People just won't let me in. There are still issues with the school and they, they've had studies, but they haven't figured it out yet. So, if they're... The north or the south, it doesn't matter, but prevent cars from hogging us to get through. If you drive out there right now, you'll notice, and by the way, I've met the McEwens and I like the McEwens. If they're here, I haven't seen them, but I like them. They're, they're a nice family. But we've got a truck and two cars on the one side and then the gentleman on the other side who's also a pretty decent neighbor, he, he parks his big trailer there. Oh, boy. So, some way that we could just be better residents, kinder residents to each other, find a way. So, I thought it was worth pointing that out to you that in fact, there is access.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
You need to run for city council.
Thank you, Bud. Briefly, I will say that, that, that nobody currently on planning commission or city council or our good mayor really had anything to do with the very large problem that we all deal with on Main Street. We are definitely looking for solutions, but if Kimberly was, was, is still here, I think let's blame it all on her. No, sure she left or not? Oh, she left, okay. Even better, blame it on her. Okay.
Hi, I'm, I'm Melissa Chalice and we live on 302 Red Pine, so we're just like kitty corner of the Page property. And Matt did a great job speaking for us. I was one of the neighbors of the, the, chatted last night. We didn't talk much about traffic, but I just wanted to say, we are right next to the McEwens and one thing that I'm a little worried about, although I mostly think this is great, we love the 55-plus community. I have five really young kids and we think that the older community is wonderful. We love them walking up and down our street. They're so kind to our kids. My kids, it's great. They're wonderful neighbors. What I'm worried about personally is if there's visitors that come by to visit any of these units, there's no parking for them. So, I'm worried that they're going to end up parking in front of our home. And that's already, we've already talked about that's a problem with traffic, but it's just also can, would there be like a possibility of getting rid of one or two units to make like us, some parking stalls, you know, some, you know, because otherwise that road is just going to get more and more parking packed on. Anyway, that's my thought. Oh, can you show me where?
Those.
Oh, those right there? In between the homes too. Oh, thank you. I didn't know. But still, it's good to know. Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay. Anybody else wish to be heard on this item? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and...
But it better be kind because they're all so kind. Every comment.
Andrew Young, 1371 East 490 South. I have, I'm new to this issue because there's so many others happening right now. And Troy, I've known you since I was maybe five years old. And so, this has nothing to do with our wonderful relationship and your family. But we do share a, you're, you remember, so this is, you remember when they wanted to put the, the rehab right by our houses? It was, it's been tough to watch it, you know? Yeah, right. You're, you've done this wonderful. You've done this a beautiful job. I just hope, a couple of things. We've heard a lot, from a lot of folks, but only one resident that actually lives on the ones to the right, to, to the right or down, down below. The other residents are part of the 55-plus. I guess I, I feel like we're going to have a couple of things that I would love some help with. And that is helping with the traffic that this is inevitably going to cause and the current worst place that we currently have traffic. And I know everyone's bringing this, so maybe an exception there. Also, if there's any way we could get the density a little lower. I, I understand the benefit of having so many of these houses and may, may, I'm, I'm talking mostly to Troy because this is why it's hard local. In DC, it's easy because you don't live next to the guy. But Troy, if, maybe if, if you imagine if this was built right by our houses, how you would feel and maybe how you would structure it if it was right by your beautiful fifth wheel, you know, and your, your, your great, our great high bench that we have and we've done so much to protect. If it was built right there, what, what would we say? You know, what would we do? Would it change the dynamic of, of, of where we live? It would, you know? And I know there's a big financial push for this. And I weigh out every day because I get yelled at every day now. I don't, I'm not even elected. I don't know how it's going to go, but I still get yelled at every day. Today, a couple of folks. I think Alpine's worth more than money. You know, it's worth more than a development. It's worth more, like people trail. I try to put a monetary value on it. It's, it's, it's worth so much. And, and we get these short-term projects and 20, 20 years down the road, we, we find out what we, what we did to modify it. Now, th- this isn't Alpine. Alpine is larger lots, just like your father put in. It's larger families, it's quieter and it's less traffic. So, when I come up and speak, which I don't want to do and I most likely lose support for doing this, this isn't Alpine. And if there's anything you can do to push it in that direction, I think that will, that will help. And that's it. Thank you.
Sure, sure, Troy. Come on up.
I was very concerned back in the early 2000s when they came and said you're going to have 24 neighbors at your dad's place. I was very concerned about it. But over the years, they have earned the respect that they are the best neighbors you could ever have. They're in bed by eight. They don't get up before eight. They don't have pool parties. They are quiet. If they leave, they leave once a day and that's it. So, the, i- if this was going in next to my house on High Bench, I'd be all for it. So, and, and the one concern of his, he, he talked about monetary. I, and I'm just going to throw a number out there. If somebody offered me a million dollars for that property to put this 55 and over community there or a million dollars to put two residential homes, I think that the Alpine community would be better off with the 55 and over community than two residential homes. So, it has nothing to do with money for us. It's all about what's the right thing to do for the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close.
Sorry. I'm Charlene Paul and our house, well, if you look at the river and then you see the five small houses to the right of that, our house is right behind that.
Just state, can you state your address?
307 River Meadow. We're in that little, kind of a little bit of a cul-de-sac. The ambulances, the Delair goes, even the Smiths have a fence. We do not and, and the Jensen's do not. This is going to disrupt our backyard a lot. Leroy's trees, we always have felt like are our trees because they're behind our house. I understand those big trees will be coming down, Troy, and I can see that. Our bigger concern, though that breaks our heart to lose those trees, is that that looks like it's very close to our property line. Are they going to put a fence up? Are they going to leave it open? The trees they were talking about earlier are to the south. There's, there will be nothing behind our house. So, what are we, what's the transition going to be like right there? Because it looks too small to us to have a row of pine trees. What do you think, Troy?
So, there, there will be a fence and the setbacks will allow enough room for pine trees or whatever you want. And we, I mean, that'll be part of the development plan. So, there, there will be trees.
Do you know what kind? No. We've watched those trees grow for 25 years, so. We just put a very expensive fence down one side of our property. Do we know what kind of fence you're planning to put? Because we don't really want that patchwork quilt look.
We haven't gotten that one yet, but we, you, you know, we'll make it. Whatever looks right, we'll do whatever we need.
Well, okay. So, our, our concern is that, and it looks to us like a lot of density the way that it's printed out here. So, that's going to put five houses in our backyard if we're looking at that correctly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. Okay, anybody else? Okay, let's go ahead and close the public hearing then. Okay, so, members of the planning commission, a lot of good input from Troy, the applicant, happy to have you here, very helpful, and also some very good comments by neighbors and residents of the 55-plus community and also some good suggestions on potential conditions for us just to think about. So, what we need to do at this point is, I suppose, maybe a two-part discussion. And the first part discussion is just quickly go through and, and right, well, let's just go through quickly the, what the develop, the development code says about a senior housing overlay application. Harmony and compliance of pose, of the proposed location with the objectives and requirements of the city general plan and zoning ordinances. Two, whether the overlay may be injurious to potential or existing developments within the vicinity. Three, current development or lack thereof adjacent to the proposed location in its harmony with existing neighborhood uses. Proximity of the proposed location to major arterial or collector streets. Five, compatibility with the density analysis of the underlying zone and neighboring development. Six, economic impact of the proposed facility or use on the surrounding area. Seven, demonstrable need for senior housing in the proposed area. Eight, city council's sole discretion to determine, to determine whether a project qualifies under the intent of the senior housing overlay ordinance. So, the last one is, you know, obviously in the, the jurisdiction of the city council. So, for us, one through seven, so let's just have discussion on those items, one through seven, and if anybody has any concerns about the project as proposed and whether it meets or does not meet those seven criteria that we need to take a look at.
This has been refreshing to have such, I'm just talking to you. It's really refreshing to have this type of a group and something that's, I mean, it's nice. It feels like there's going to be a good solution and we can figure that out in a peaceful way. That's refreshing.
Okay, thanks, Suze.
Okay. But go ahead, take off.
Oh, I said all I have to say.
I'll just second what Susan said. I lived on River Meadow for a lot of years and the best people in the world live there, so. It's great. Great community.
If we look at number eight, even though the council takes care of that, well, wait a minute, go to seven, we definitely, the need is right. Everybody's talked about this. We are going to be an aging population. Yesterday at church with fall break, everybody in church was old.
But not you.
But not me.
Yeah, not you.
Everybody but me.
That was an ageist comment. You can't do that.
Yeah, so...
We really do, it's a need. And I love, I love that, that there's been so much thought about it versus just, you know, I thought that was very thoughtful how you've presented this. And then the other thing, what the state requires for all this extra housing, this would qualify for that, right, Ryan? Well, there you go. That's one. But anyway, I just was, I'm just, at first I was kind of like really hesitant. My other, my only concern is that dang traffic.
Well, two things on that, right, is that we only have a very, the definitely need for senior housing. There's only a very few places in Alpine where...
True.
Do it. This is one. It's right adjunct to existing senior housing.
It's nice space for them instead of being out on the main.
Yeah, for sure. And so, the traffic issue really is, has nothing to do with the existing, the existing senior living facility or, you know, housing there or this. And it's, it's something that, that I know there is a lot of effort going on right now by a task force with the mayor, several members of the city council to work with Mountainville and try to solve this just perennial traffic mess that, that we've all inherited, so. Okay. But thanks, Suze. Good comments. Any other comments with respect to any of these items, one through seven?
Well, the density in number five, I do worry about, like the neighbor said, that Mountmore visitor parking. I do go visit my friends in Red Pine, the white twin homes. We don't know what to call you. Are you Red Pine? River Meadows. I always think of River Meadows as the assisted living, so. Oh, they, oh, okay, okay. So, you are kind of intertwined in a way. But when I go visit my friends over there, it, there is visitor parking, but they're full. And so, I end up parking where I probably shouldn't because I park on the side. And then, that's where the emergency vehicles come through. And so, I do agree with the neighbors that maybe a little lower density by a uni, a combo unit and more parking will give it more of that open feel that we all enjoy and get people off the road and into the proper spots. Because sometimes they're all full, it's hard to find and, and so, that's my thought on the density.
Okay, so, yeah, no, interesting. I'll just say a couple of things. I, I drove through River Meadows on my way over here just to, to look at, at, at the lot because, I mean, nowhere I ever go, not an area I'm familiar with. So, drove through it, looked at the lot, looked at the, the current River Meadows and actually made a three-point turn in the visitor parking. And I mean, there wasn't one visitor parking space even occupied. So, I don't know if, I mean, again, I never go through there. My experience was, I mean, there was, I don't know, probably a dozen or, I don't know how many visitor spots there were, but there wasn't, there wasn't a single car in any of the visitor parking spots. So, I don't know if that was a weekend, a Sunday afternoon or, you know, I, I don't know what that situation was. And a couple of things, I don't think this is a final plat by any means. And I think that Troy has probably worked with existing River Meadows and, and figured out, okay, look, how many visitor parking spaces do you have? This is how many we're proposing. Is that adequate for the number of units? Then I would say, I mean, you know, to Andrew's point, we would all love, you know, lower density, but it's not just about the developer, the owners monetizing. It truly is about, you know, making or having units available for use by our aging population. And I just, I know, and I mean, once we get to be a certain age, we have parents, they're getting older, we're trying to find places for them, we're trying to find places for my in-laws and, I mean, we couldn't get anything in River Meadow. we couldn't get anything in River Meadows to save our lives, and, and had to go well outside of the city, but. Jeanette has a comment or a question?
I just wanna say, I'm in number 24, and the parking is right beside me. There is never more than one or two cars parked in there unless it's a holiday or something that a lot of family members come to.
And how many units are right there? In, in, you have your, you have separate, you have your separate little buildings, and then where River Meadows actually is, like, how many units are we looking at?
Twelve, twelve of them are there, and then twelve there's north. But, we have 12 parking spots in two places, six and six. The new design is also to have 12. We don't know if they're even than ours, or smaller than ours, we don't know, but I kinda like Michelle's comment, and I'm gonna leave that for myself.
Duly noted.
Okay, thanks Michelle, Troy?
Quick question on number six, the economic impact of the proposed facility. Is that also, is that saying that also we can, we consider the economic impact on the surrounding area? Is that, is that what that's saying as well?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean honestly, I do feel like there'd be a little bit of impact on the houses that border that.
Economic?
Yeah.
So, I mean, increasing property value or decreasing?
Decreasing, decreasing, a little bit. I, I feel like it, I mean, I mean.
Well, I defer to you are a realtor, I wondered that myself, but honestly logically, I thought, I didn't know if it would decrease or increase, I thought there might be an argument that it increases, you know, value. Good, good neighbors, low impact, low traffic, well maintained, cause River Meadows is beautiful driving through it, it's fantastic.
It just, yeah, it's, it's just different housing, when, as soon as it goes from something to something different, I mean, just from my real estate experience, you know, I mean, it does, it's gonna, it's gonna be a little harder sell, I mean, people are gonna be a little concerned about that.
But that's al, but that's always been commercial with the senior, you know, senior housing overlay, so I mean, it's, it's, that's always been the overlay.
Yeah.
This meeting's unique, normally you come, and as I prepared and drove through the neighborhood, you look at the density and everything else, you're, this doesn't make sense, I had concern about a lot of these issues. What's been unique about this meeting is the citizens have come together with a lot of resolutions, and you've got an owner who has conscientiously made concessions, and so, you know, my mindset's kinda flipped from just looking at it just as text and data, and coming and meeting you, and seeing the resolutions, and so, you know, I guess I'm ready for a motion, but.
You mean there's a heart and a soul inside that robotic exterior? Is that what you're saying?
There's, there's not a brain, but there's a heart sometimes.
Okay, well, yeah, certainly, no, I would love to entertain a motion, but I wanna make sure everybody's had a chance to be heard.
Jeff, what do you think? You didn't weigh in. Jeff, you always have something to say.
I mean, I, I, I'm in favor of this, I mean, if, even if it just is for the item of we need more senior housing here, so, just, just that one thing, and it goes, it's going in the same place, to me it just makes sense. And I also appreciate the family and all the effort that they, that they have shown, and that they, as expressed, that they will continue, you know, to me, it's like, we, we want that kind of effort.
Yeah, for sure.
And the traffic problem isn't caused as much by the dense, increased density as it is something that doesn't have anything to do with the people in this room.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks Jeff. Well, I'm, I'm happy to entertain a motion, it sounds like Greg, you're itching to give us one.
You have comments? All right, I'd like to move to recommend approval of the proposed rezone of 242 and 243 East Red Pine Drive to business, commercial, and senior housing overlay zone with the following conditions. Number one, that it's 55 and only approval. Number two would be that there is a fence or some form of privacy between the 55 community and the people that I believe are on the east side. That there is a pathway for neighbors to have access to the park. That we have minimal signage, I don't know the right words to say there, but not big lights and stuff, but minimal signage. And that's my, my motion.
Can we put in the HOA standards appearance? That was important, I think, to the neighbors. Yeah.
So, I had that, cause I, the way it's supposed to be. The other requirement would be that the standards are equal to the existing 55-plus community that's directly west.
Okay, well done, thank you Greg, we have a motion by Greg, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Sue's speech to us, we have a second by Sue's Wittenberg, discussion on the motion.
Yeah, so are we adding all that stuff now? Like, should we add the line of trees, or, I thought we were gonna do that a little later.
We'll come back and take a look at those.
We'll clean it.
Yeah, I, these can all be revisited, but I think it's helpful to send at least some thoughts on conditions up to the city council, which is a good, you know, which I think Greg condensed a lot of what we, you know, heard, so.
I said fence instead of trees, because I'm not sure that we're ever gonna get the 70-foot trees in our lifetime, or the people that are 55-plus, which includes me.
Me too, most of us, so, okay. So, all right, discussion, we, we had a motion and a second. Troy, were you okay with that then? All right, discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I just didn't know if we had to, yeah, add all that.
Okay, no further discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the record reflect a unanimous approval of the motion. Okay, thank you Greg, thank you everybody, and everybody that commented, much appreciated. Your, your insights were helpful. Okay, next item, where are we? Oh, all right, we've got a, a request to upgrade equipment for a wireless cell tower.
Thanks for coming everyone, thanks for coming, that was so cool.
Should, should we hold off a sec? Hold off a sec? Okay.
Yep.
What is this, why are we, why are we?
I know, what's?
What, what is this?
Make good decisions.
Meetings that nobody moved. Is there an open bar in the hallway?
Who's, I, I think you need to call for order here. And, and, and what do we have, commissioners? Commissioners are over here.
I figured, I didn't recognize most of them, I didn't recognize most of them, so I figured, but, yeah, what blew me away is that, you know, they actually got together and they chatted, and, and, yes, yes, and ours tried to get together, yeah, ours tried to get together, and then we repeated things that were untrue, and, so ours didn't go as well as this one. And, yeah, I do think it should be less dense though, by one unit, that, that, the Red Pine, but, yeah, I was, I was blown away that the owner and, and working, and the HOA is disgusted and taking in, cause that's my war, that's our war, that's, Red Pine is, are you just, yeah? Oh, yeah, he is here, that's, yeah, no, that is Shepherd, he's in the hall with his, he's here, he's here. Yeah, the only, yeah. Yeah, I do have one recommendation to adapt it, upon talking to neighbors, and, but, yeah, but he's here, so we just, I know.
Call people, now we got potty man back. Yeah, exactly.
I pull a Peter Navarro on every day.
My four acres all moving.
I know, my parents are rich and, my dad's, and my own daddy, and my mom, and so, we may move from California to Paris. They're like, oh really?
It's out of control. Neighbors are having fun. It's like. Where's Sue's?
Call Sue's back, socializing.
Halftime. Hey, Sue's! We do not wanna be setting a precedent.
Okay Ryan, let's go ahead and get going. If, if anybody is out in the hallway and still chatting, we're, it'd be, be great if you could move it perhaps outside, so we can hear ourselves think, you know, in here, but a raucous crowd tonight, a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead Ryan with the, the next item, which is proposed, oh no, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, went ahead of myself. Request to upgrade equipment for a wireless cell tower located at 694 Rocky Mountain Drive. Introduce that for us?
Yep, yeah, this is an existing cell tower that's, that's there already, I'll go ahead and just show the picture of it at the end of this, cause that's where everything is. This is an existing cell tower, what they wanna do is they wanna update, or add some, some updated equipment on there, there it is. So, it's on private property, it's an updated to a existing wireless pole. What's being proposed is they wanna send an underground conduit, conduct, connecting the facilities within the leased area, which we saw as that fenced-off area there. Be underground, connect it to that, need a, running a new feed line cable up the existing pole, so it doesn't increase the height or anything, and then adding those, those new antennas, those three, I think I put, on here it says four, but I believe it's just three antennas on there. Based off what we've, what we've looked at and what we've seen, they'll, they'll come out about two feet and be about seven feet in length. And, and looking at this, like I said, it's just an update to an existing tower, it's not a new tower, one of the things you guys can look at is, is we can see on there, it's a brown pole, you can require the, the paint color of it to be, you know, either brown or green or blue, whatever, to make it blend in a little better. But yeah, this is, this is something like you said, if, if, we're, we, as staff, we reviewed this and thought it was a substantial change to the existing pole, so that's why it's coming, or to the existing wireless antenna, so that's why it's coming to you guys, but just a couple things to emphasize, again, existing pole, it's not a new one, won't increase the height or the base, and, and yeah, so, and, and Alan made a great point earlier, it is heavily regulated by the, what are the acronyms, FAA and FCC, as, as far as that goes, so, this is a public hearing, we, we've noticed it, done all the fun stuff, that part, and then this is a recommendation of the city council you guys are making for this. Any questions or anything? Like I said, this is pretty heavily regulated by, by a federal agency, so we're kinda.
It has to be approved, right? I mean, I read that in your X1 notes.
So is, is the feds putting a spy cam up onto Alpine in this hotbed of rebellion?
I can't, I can't, I can't say that out loud.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I've been here long enough, I've seen several of these come through, and I mean, there's, there's, like, I mean, really, there's so much federal regulation here that, other than make somebody paint this existing pole, I mean, it's just, it's just pretty much, you know, unless there's something out of the order, which Ryan's indicated there isn't, there is, you know, frankly, not a, a whole lot for us to do, other than understand what's being asked and move it on forward.
And there are, there are two existing, or, there's three total, but two other ones that have similar antennas that are, that are up there already, so this would just be similar to what's there.
Are they owned by the same people?
I, I don't know the answer to that, I don't know who's, I, I assume they are, Michelle lives close to him, and she's nodding her head, so I'm assuming that, that's, it's a, it's a Crown, Crown Castle Inc. is the one that's, that's.
Sometimes there's also these poles, and, and I mean, there's tons of different companies that all have their equipment on the pole, so.
Yeah, the, on, so what the, what is difference is now versus, these poles are old, you can tell, they've been there a while, on the top of the hill, but since the time that these poles have gone in, the, the city sold that, allowed that development to become a PRD in our neighborhood, and so right now, that, the city owns this land that you're seeing in, in front of this pole, this is now city land and part of our open space plan, that, and the homes, there's two of the three lots have been built on, and so they're very close to the hill and to the top of this hill. So under 3.27.050, it says that we can require landscaping for this pole, but instead of landscaping, I would propose that we make that a tree.
And that's the question, can you make them, I've got.
Can we make them camouflage it?
We've, we've looked at a few of those too, yeah, that, that would do that, that's something we can, we can certainly look at, and see if that's a, uh, when we were meeting with the city attorney earlier today, the mayor sent us pictures of ones that, they, these, the ones that we were looking at were, they look like water towers, but I have seen those that look like, that look like trees.
Yeah, and they've gotten much better, and, I mean, when we discussed this 12 years ago, as these cell towers were getting more and more clustered, and I guess my other question is, is this a live tower right now?
Uh, I don't, I believe so.
Do we know, is it operational?
I think it is, but my understanding is just an update to the equipment to more water.
Yeah, cause some I don't believe are operational anymore, but I, I'm not a wireless expert, but that is a suggestion for the neighborhood, this is a hill, very seen, very visible, the city owns this land now as our open space, there's, yeah, the star is owned by the, the people that own this property, cause they own the top of the hill to the south, and the city owns the top of the hill to the north. And so that's my suggestion, instead of landscaping, which we can apply, and, is that we, cause you can, we, the, the neighborhood has planted trees on this north side to camouflage and hide it, but it was an Eagle Scout project, and Lon Lott ran that project, he was in our ward, but without support to water the trees and to keep them going, those trees all died, and you can see, there, those trees don't exist anymore because this, not, yeah, without water in Utah, nothing exists, so that's just my thought, is that because the city doesn't wanna run water, that we have them camouflage it to beautify the area.
So, so perhaps a motion, cause this is a motion to recommend, right? So, so perhaps we put a. So, I thought it was you talking Sue.
I did too.
Yes, um, yes, so sultry, I thought that, yeah, perhaps we could just send it along with a condition that, sorry, that went off the rails, with a condition that the city take a look at requesting the applicant to camouflage it, cause, cause sometimes, I mean, you go up, I don't, we don't probably do this, but you go up top of Suncrest, and I think that huge, what I always thought forever was a water tower is actually just,
Yeah.
you know, camouflage.
Yep.
And I've seen trees that, that, you know, pine trees that, you know, they make them look kinda like a pine tree, look better than, just nothing, so, anyway, and a, a motion might, might go up with a condition to have city council look into that.
Sorry Alan, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, this is on Clyde Shepherd's property on this one, so, he's giving me the eye, so I wanna just give Clyde, Clyde the credit there that this is on his, his property, it's, is, is part of those, so.
Okay. All right, any questions or further discussion on, oh, we need to have a public hearing, so, all right, let's, let's go ahead and open for a public hearing, anybody would, anybody here who would like to, or has anything to say on this particular item, invite you to come forward and state your name and your address.
Andrew Young, 1371, he's 490 South. I don't fight against everything, okay? Everyone says that, you just fight against everything, doesn't, no, no, I fight for peace and quiet and views, despite how tired people are of listening. So, this one, I actually have been working on this issue. There are residents concerned about their views who live near this, and I actually should be in DC working on federal things right now, but because the government is shut down, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna be able to be this meeting, because it's shut down, I can be here. You, you can disagree with the federal government. You, you can, uh, disagree with the federal government, which generally is translated as some sort of company funding some sort of project. So, so it doesn't mean we can't raise questions, we have federal representation here in Alpine, supporting us, wanting Alpine to be protected, wanting the views to be preserved. We can ask Representative Kennedy or even Mike Lee to help, and they will help. Now, there are several options here where we can still adhere to regulations, uh, and that is, we can put them in places that aren't near neighborhoods. They do emit EMF. The tech, the technology is becoming obsolete, as internet is more and more towards satellite or buried. It is faster, it is better, I know this is cellular. So these aren't long, long-term things that, or this is an issue that we can think about long-term. Because in the short term, it does decrease the value of the neighbors' properties, it does obscure their views, that's one of the principles of Alpine. You have this beautiful picture up there behind us, and the most of it is the mountains, and this does get in the way of, of their views, and they'd... Some of them, they can't voice this because they, they don't know how to, they don't know how to go against the federal government, the planning commission, and regulation, and just the status quo of everything moving forward. So, uh, I would just encourage, this comment is more, as these come up more and more, that we do have other options to place them in other places. Um, we, obscuring them is good, and then just know that these are becoming obsolete. The companies are using other, better technology, and so as you're forming these, know that this thing might be kind of like old telephone poles soon that we look at and kind of keep that with a grain of salt of where, of how temporary they might be versus, uh, satellite systems or underground systems. And by doing that, we can be very forward-thinking, while in the interim, while the companies that place these do very well, not obscuring people's views and, uh, not emitting EMF, and, uh, helping the neighbors' value of their properties nearby. So that's all, just I hope to consider as it keeps coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Anybody else?
Kay Holbrook, one seventy-seven West Cascade. Uh, my backyard looks onto these cell towers, and like Michelle had mentioned, this has come up many times, and we come every time you send me a notice that something else is going on with the cell towers. And we've never been able to get them moved, so that would be great if we could do that at some point. Um, we've tried and tried and tried, and, and, and they have rights and the FDA and all of that, and, um, and so I just ask that you keep that in mind, if, if that ever comes about, that would really be great, if we could move them to not, uh, right in the middle of the residential, but maybe a park or somewhere else. Also, I really like Michelle's idea about having it disguised in some way. We have tried the trees, and if, if they're not willing to disguise it, you know, wood trees be another option? Possibly would the city consider running water, um, because they are very large towers, and, um, and I know they're not going to go any higher, but I, I wonder if they're going to go any wider out. Um, you know, they get, should get, that pod at the top just seems to get bigger and bigger and bigger. I'm not sure there's anything we can do about that, because we're not increasing the height. But, uh, you know, it does get more bulky-looking all the time. So, I just wanted to make those comments and just have them noted, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else like to be heard on this issue?
I'm Clyde Shepard, I'm the one that owns this, uh, this hill. My family's owned it for over, for approximately sixty years. We were there on that hill before anybody even moved around us. Towers were on this hill before they all moved in. And of course, you want to move in, you love Alpine, you love the view, you love everything, you do the best you can, and... I've actually honestly can sit here and tell you, I've done the very best I can to make these towers, uh, very, uh, uh, as accommodating as a tower can get. And I'm here to tell you, my wife and I go into the south rim of Grand Canyon, saw a tower, 'cause I see every tower there is on I fifteen, on eighty, on forty, you name it.
It's amazing what you see when you start looking for it.
I do, I, it's just a habit. They had one as a tree, it stuck out like a sore thumb. Okay, and I, I, so you can, you, there, there are certain things we're required by the city to do, and, and I even go above and beyond that, to be honest with you. It really is, you can question me, whatever. We had seven pine trees planted on the north side of this hill. I personally paid for water to run from my property down south all the way to the top of the hill, there's already water up there. Box, valve box, everything, ran, hired Lawn Lot to come and, the city, it wasn't a, it was not. The city did an Eagle Scout project further east, but this was out of my own pocket, my own money, just to try to help accommodate some of the concerns around this, these, my poles on this hill. I even got sued over my star, so, you know, it is what it is. Bottom line, we planted like seven trees, and we ran drip system, Lawn ran drip system to them and everything. We don't know what happened, we went, he went up on the hill, I says, Lawn, something's happening to these trees, boom, dead. And somebody had cut the drip line going to the trees from my valve box. And I'm like, huh, I'm not, I'm not planting trees again. I'm not, you know, I'm just not going to do that. But we are within code, of the city code. We are allowed to upgrade based on city code and FCC to upgrade within a reasonable amount. We're not wanting to go higher, we just want to take old equip, we take, we take an old equipment off, we just want to upgrade to new equipment. Eventually, this gentleman, whoever spoke up, he may be right, maybe it'll go obsolete. I personally like Starlink, I have friends that have it on their RVs, they love it. Um, so anyway, I've taken enough of your time, but I just wanted you to know, we have gone out of our, I really can honestly sit here and stand here and say, we've gone out of our way to, uh, to try to accommodate, and we will continue to do that, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. What I'm hearing is that we should find Lawn Lot, I think, yeah.
It is not Lawn's fault.
I know. He's a good man. For sure, thank you, Clyde. Okay, anybody else? All right, let's go ahead and close the public hearing then. Um, discussion or a motion?
Seems like we had this discussion about camouflaging these towers before. Uh, and the consensus at that time was that the things that you do to make them into trees, or swarrel cactuses, or whatever, uh, look worse than the original article. So, I don't know if we feel differently today, uh, but that's something we ought to consider before we make that as part of any condition.
Putting that in the motion, that the city council has to approve the tree before, or something like that, maybe.
What, what I'm saying is, is that a good idea?
Yeah.
Well, if it's a good-looking tree, I don't know.
You surveyed everybody, you'd probably get half saying they look stupid and ugly.
No, I, I don't know if there would be condition, a, a condition, anything other than just, just whatever the motion is with a, you know, request that the city council consider camouflage options, and see if any would be reasonable or applicable.
It already has to be a, a certain color, so...
Okay, Sues, I hear a motion coming out of you.
It did say the paint color. It did specify the paint color in there, though.
I, I think it's kind of a natural color now.
Yeah, it, it specified that it was going to be that color.
So first, before I do this, I don't know that everybody loves it looking like a tree.
Yeah, I, I would not be in favor of that.
I don't, I don't even know what that would cost.
'Cause it can look really ugly.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would have to see a plan.
Yeah, like, can, can the city council not look at it and say, okay, yeah, I know we want the regular, or yeah, we'll take the tree?
But you're going to have, you know, arms are going to come out two and a half feet on each side.
That, that's why I don't know that it's a, a condition more than just a suggestion, if at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't think that was it, that was everybody's thing, that they wanted one.
But, well, you know, all you can do is suss it out in a motion.
I'm, I move to recommend approval with conditions of the wireless cell tower equipment upgrade located at six ninety-four Rocky Mountain Drive, based on the findings and conditions listed in the staff report, and with the additional conditions, that the city will consider the progress as things become available with our modern technology.
And, and how are they, how are they going to do that?
That wasn't the question.
No, that came up.
What, what wasn't, it wasn't about the technology.
Well, you know how, like, we could bury it, there's different options that are going to happen down the road, it's not always...
Well, that's not on this motion.
Yeah, that's not...
I wrote it in, John.
You were listening with the wrong ear.
I start over.
Well, sure.
With the suggestion, the city council look at camouflage options.
Well, I'll say that then.
You can say whatever.
Ready? Motion to approve. I move to recommend approval of the wireless cell tower equipment upgrade located at six ninety-four Rocky Mountain Drive, as proposed, based on the findings and conditions listed in the staff report, with the suggestion that the city council can consider options of camouflage.
Okay.
Are we just going to leave it at camouflage option?
Sure.
Such as a pine tree, a swarrel cactus, or a giant Santa.
If we say that, it could come out like painted camouflage.
Yeah, so I would just say camouflage, I think it's probably good, okay?
I think I'm leaving it there.
All right, okay. Uh, so a period at the end of camouflage, Marla. Okay, we have a motion by Sues Wittenberg, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by John McKay, discussion on the motion. Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, uh, the ayes take that unanimously, all right. Can we move on, or is everybody on this, this up here going to abandon me yet again before the next item? Jeez, okay.
Content. Held in contempt.
All right, let's, what, Greg?
Good thing the mic was off. Um, no, I, okay. That was funny, now you're knocking me off my game, I got to regroup. Okay, we are, uh, at...
D.
Let's see, oh yeah, D, all right. Uh, proposed code change to section three dot oh one, definitions for a produce stand. There will be a public hearing, so, uh, Ryan, go ahead and introduce that for us, please, thank you.
And I'm just going to, you can see the next two items are, are, uh, crossed out, those will not be discussed tonight, those have been removed from the agenda. So, uh, just, if you're waiting around for those, we don't want to keep you all night, but, uh, they are all associated, so we'll, we'll jump into the, into the produce stand definition. But, uh, Paul Gu and Derek Rowley, uh, own and manage the Burgess Orchards, uh, produce stand, uh, located at six twenty-five South Alpine Highway. They've submitted an application to change the definition of a produce stand, um, for what they, what it, what it currently is. The, is, in your packet and, and, uh, what we've got before us is, is what they're proposing. Added language is in green, if it's removed or taken out, uh, it's in, it's in red. Uh, we sent out an email today, the applicants have, uh, based off neighbor feedback, uh, taken out some, some things and added some things, and we'll, we'll go over those as well. This is a public hearing, we've, we've noticed it, uh, so we'll, we'll do that as well, uh, is it's a legislative, uh, code update, so that's, that's part of the review process of it. A lot of this have already been addressed in some of their, uh, items that they've, uh, submitted for the definition change. Um, these are just what staff recommends, and I think almost all these have been, have been addressed, but the not limited to phasing, uh, staff, we, as we reviewed that, we felt that left it too open-ended. To, to do that, we want specifics, uh, so it's, it's, you know, within the, within the produce stand. Uh, prepared meats, uh, prepared meats and licensed facilities could include such items as hamburgers, hot dogs, deli meats, different things, uh, similar to that, uh, just, just to consider, and again, our, our recommendation, our view of this is that, uh, planning commission look at that and, uh, consider if that's in harmony with, with the, with the produce stand, uh, as originally def, uh, defined. Beverages, uh, again, these could include fountain drinks and things like that, again, planning commission look and see if that's something that, uh, purpose and character of the produce stand is, is met by those. Um, a couple of these they've addressed in the new definition proposal, uh, they've taken out not limited to, uh, they've taken out beverages, and so some of those, those have been addressed. I can pull up, so this was the original, uh, uh, definitions that they've had, again, uh, the, the purpose of this, they've taken out, or they're, they're recommending, obviously, this is what you guys have to go off of, you received an email earlier today with a, a new proposal. They're looking at taking out this sentence, the contiguous lots can be counted together towards the five acre requirement. Uh, they've, they've taken that out, um, they've taken out...
Yeah, Ryan, real quick, I don't, I think we, well, I guess I shouldn't speak for everybody, but I have in front of me the, uh, planning commission agenda application form...
Yeah.
That, that you sent around today that has basically the, the, um, the language that you're talking about, so...
Yes, yep, yep, so I will go through line by line, and it's just...
Does, does everybody have it in front of them, up here on the commission? Okay.
So, yeah, that, that went out in an email today, uh, to, to look at that, that was just the, the latest. Again, with, as far as noticing and things like that, we just noticed these for a change to the definitions of a produce stand. Uh, and obviously, as you guys review that, we take public comment, that can be changed and updated as we go. But this is what we have right now to go, to go in this, uh, to take a look at this. Any questions, comments, or anything? Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we just, we just put this in there so it's easier to track and follow, so, uh, what's, what's been changed and, uh, proposed that way, so... Yeah, any, any questions, comments? Again, this is what was proposed, uh, is, is part of this.
So that's different than what you sent today?
Yeah, so, uh, if you look at this, the def, the, uh, purpose of the definition, uh, the contiguous lots, they've taken that out, so it all has to be on one lot, that's what we originally have. Uh, they've removed the language, but not limited to, uh, let's see, uh, let's see... In beverages, yep, yep, right there, beverages, has also been removed. It's part of that original. Yes.
So, so Ryan, in the, in, in the application form that you sent around today, there, let's see, there's language where farm merchandise was...
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's things that they like to add, so they wanted to add farm merchandise, and then to sell t-shirts and hats that...
So, i- is it, I mean, i- is it possible for you just to, to, I'm having a hard time following that when I'm looking at this, the application that was sent, that you sent to us today? Do you by chance have that, that you can throw up on the, I don't know if that would be helpful?
Yeah, 'cause I think it'd be important to understand exactly what we're looking at.
Yeah, so, um, and, and we can have the applicants come up and, and, and help us with some of this, but, uh, I think that they, yeah, that, that there was an application form filled out by Burgess Orchards, uh, that is the most current requested amendment to the definition of produce stand. And I think Ryan's looking for, is what you emailed around to us, Ryan?
Yep.
Sometime late morning, early afternoon?
Yep.
Can we just click on that and throw it out?
This is the latest, based off what we were just looking at. What they would, what they would like to change to what they originally put in, so...
Yeah.
Obviously, the second bullet point there where it says we would like to open year-round for day, that would be amendment to the conditional use, which they pulled off the agenda, so don't, don't worry about that part.
So this is, this is what we're going off of?
This is what the latest they proposed, yep, yep. And again, they, based off neighbor, neighbor feedback on this of, of what they've got.
So, so Ryan, our current ordinance just states, any temporary or permanent structure used for the sale of agricultural products that is cited on the property on which at least five acres of land use are used... Acres of land, of, five acres of land are used for growing, uh, products being offered for sale. Is that, that our, that's our current definition of a produce stand? That's it, that one line?
No.
Okay, well, that's, all right, that's the confusion of jumping back and forth.
Yeah, yep, this is fun for everybody. I'm going to open screen number three, which is the original. So this is what we have right now. I was saying he was right, it was eight o'clock, yeah. So I can jump back and forth if anyone has any preferences. But this is how it currently, currently sits as far as the definition for a produce stand. Again, when I, when we, when we first came through this, it was we kind of wanted more specific definitions and things like that, so it didn't, you know, grow into things it wasn't intended.
Previously, there was no size specification, lot size specification.
So there, there is in the, in the condition, or in the...
In the conditional use permit.
That's what it's got five.
Correct.
Yep, yep.
Correct.
But in the definition, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, that, exactly.
Yep.
Okay, all right, Ryan, any, sorry, we kind of got off on that tangent just trying to
No, no, that's good.
understand what we've got before us, but.
That's good.
All right, you wanna, wanna?
No, that's what I have. It's a, it's a public hearing. Like I said, most of the changes, we just need to consider if this is kind of in line with the intent of a produce stand as we've, we've originally defined it as. So it's, is our recommendation from staff is just to take that into consideration as you, as you make a recommendation on this.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ryan. So before we, before we open up for public hearing, I found that, that sometimes there are, that it's helpful to have the applicants just come up to the podium and provide any commentary on the application, you know, Derek and Paul, that you would like, that you think might be helpful for, you know, those that are here for this, the questions they might have that you can anticipate. You're certainly not obligated to come up, but if you would like, would certainly like to give you the opportunity.
Ten days ago, whatever that was, not last Sunday, but the Sunday before.
Sorry, Derek, we all know you, but can you just give us your name and address? That helps, Marla, thank you.
Derek Rowley, six twenty-five South Alpine Highway, Alpine, Utah. We had a neighborhood meeting following the meeting we had a few weeks ago here. We're very grateful for those that attended and for the feedback that was given. And I apologize for the multiple formats here, but I have been receiving phone calls from people that attended that meeting and talking to people since then and trying our best to incorporate it as much as that feedback as we could into this definition. I appreciate Ryan for helping me understand what has to be done, when it has to be done, and from the feedback that I have received, we believe this is the closest thing of what everyone would be comfortable with. Once again, we're really grateful for those that have reached out and spoken to us. I think I had like fifteen or sixteen phone calls just yesterday on this leading up to today. And happy to continue to have those, those conversations. As, as we've stated in the past, we truly originally had a commercial application in because this is kind of messy, as you guys can see. It became very clear to us that is not what the neighborhood or the city really wanted to have at this time, which is what we're fine with. So we rescinded that. That's why it's marked out on the application, as us taking it off the agenda. But we would like to sell more things at the fruit stand. That is something we want to do, and we feel like that there's a lot of people in Alpine that would like us to do that. And we think that with the regulations that the conditional use permit requires us to have, including adequate parking, not being open after dark, not being open during the winter months and things like that, that there is ways for the city to kind of hold us in check for those that are worried about that type of thing. We, we believe that we have a really nice orchard. We try really hard. I was doing some math today. I have a relative that runs the largest packing shed in Utah, and I think the Burgess Orchard's peach, peach operation is probably a top fifteen in the state of Utah. As these peach operations and apple operations disappear every year, more and more. And we think we do a good job of keeping it, and we're always trying to make it better. That's, that's kind of, do you guys have any specific questions?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Ryan, while we've got Derek up here, can you pull up the, the current definition of a produce stand? That, that you, you had it up just a, just a minute ago, and I'm, I'm just curious if we can just take a look while I've got Derek here. And, and Paul. And so, right, like, okay, so, so right now, just looking at this, right, we've got any temporary or permanent structure used for the sale of agricultural products that is sighted on the lot on which the majority of products being offered for sale have been grown. The agricultural, agriculture products offered for sale must be primarily fresh whole fruits and/or vegetables. Certain animal products may also be sold as part of the produce stand. These are limited to fresh eggs, raw milk, fresh cheese, fresh yogurt, raw honey, beeswax, honeycomb, butter, sour cream, and beef jerky. So maybe it'd just be really easy if you could just give us just a quick list of the things that you are, so we don't have to jump back and forth, the things that you're wanting to sell. 'Cause, 'cause you're asking us to amend the definition of a produce stand, which is a conditional use in a, I know, on a residential parcel, so. This is currently what you, all these things you could sell, right, under the definition of produce stand. What else is it that you're wanting to sell that isn't on this list?
One, one thing that is, I think is important is, in the new definition, we say, in addition to products grown on those five plus acres, agriculture and value-added products produced off-site may also be sold. So that is something we would like to add to this.
Yeah, I, I think there's just really two important changes that we're asking for. One is what Derek said, which is that currently it says that the majority of things you sell must be produced on-site. And we're proposing to change that to something that is similar in spirit, but more, more lenient in some ways and more strict in other ways, and that is that you must devote at least five acres of land to producing stuff that, that you're selling there. The current conditional use requirement for the five acres allows you to have five acres, but doesn't actually require you to use it for any growing. And we're proposing that, you know, that I think, to me, the spirit of this thing is that Alpine has a certain agricultural heritage that we like, the character, the aesthetic is a nice thing. And if people who are devoting a lot of land to growing stuff in Alpine are doing it, they should be able to sell, sell other kinds of farm things that don't grow immediately right there. That's, that's kind of the spirit of that change.
What percent of the, and first of all, thanks for talking with me earlier this week or last week, whatever it was. What percent of the current products are being manufactured or built or grown on the property?
Of the current offering?
Just current offering. What percent of the, your revenues or products sold come from?
So we sell about six things at the store. So we sell the desserts, we sell corn, we sell squash, we sell tomatoes, we sell raspberries, apples and peaches, and watermelon. I guess we have some pumpkins there right now. About, I would say, so I was doing the math this morning.
Recording stopped.
I was, I was doing the math this morning with my brother and tallying up all the growing receipts. I would say this year about fifty-five percent of the things that we sold at that store were produced on-site. And we have an apple you pick, which produces a significant amount of fruit.
Yeah, there are all those things, but I think the vast, I mean, if you want to simplify it, it's like, we sell peaches, we do apple you pick, and we sell peach ice cream. And if you give us credit for the peaches and the peach ice cream as the whole thing, then the math is really good. Depending on how you want to count the ice cream, you know, we don't, we don't grow ice cream on-site.
But, okay, well, just, just to Greg's point, though, fifty-five percent, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the, I mean, I guess we could quibble over the, the definition of majority, but if fifty-five percent of your offerings are grown or produced on-site, is that not, I mean, are we not, isn't that the majority?
It is. We would like to offer more things.
There are a number of things we wanted to be able to sell this year that we are not.
All right, so what were the things, and we could go and find them, maybe you can just give us a quick, you know, quick list of the things that are not currently in the definition of produce stand that you wanted to offer?
Yeah, so we've got in our proposed definition, fresh cut flowers. Right now, it says raw milk. I don't actually know how that got in there. We proposed changing that to dairy, and that will cover our ice cream. Importantly, we proposed adding meat. And then we've...
So, so real quick, meat that is not beef jerky?
Correct. So the current definition allows beef jerky. Also not sure exactly how that got in the definition. We don't sell any beef jerky, but Derek does have a brother-in-law that has local cattle. We'd love to be able, at the Mozyda Market folks, if any of you shop there, we think they make really good stuff. We think it'd be nice to have it here.
And one, one question on that, so somewhere I read, and there's a bunch of different definitions. I think it said prepared or prepared as well. Are you intending to create like a burger stand and sell hamburgers, hot dogs, and those types of things, or is it just taking fresh meat? I mean, I buy a half a cow every year from somebody down south. Is it that type of thing, where I don't need to buy a half a cow, I can come and buy fresh cut wagyu beef there?
Yeah, to directly answer your question, so our, our inspiration comes from having visited a lot of the farm stores around Utah, so we went to the Midway Ballerina Farm Store, the Redman Farm Store in Orem, the Oliver's in Pleasant Grove, and a few others. And one of the common items we see there are things like breakfast sandwiches, and we think they're, they're really good. There's kind of just, it's like bread and eggs. And we, so we would like to be able to sell some prepared foods, and that is reflected in the language that, that we put there. I think burger stand makes it sound like we want to open like a McDonald's. It's nothing like that.
I didn't mean that offensive, I apologize.
No, no, of course, of course. No, not at all, I'm, I just...
But cooking, cooking meats and breakfast burritos, those types of things you do intend to do?
Yes, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we intend to do that very expansively. I think probably you're gonna see one or two kind of like simple products that are, you know, fit the, fit the character of a farm store where you'd expect to get things that are really like farm-fresh, not, nothing processed or, you know, prepackaged.
I'm mainly thinking about just traffic and the time it takes to get something and parking and safety, so that's kind of where my question's coming from. It's not so much targeted towards the activity.
And we do believe that given the restrictions under the conditional use permit, that we have to provide enough traffic and things like that, that if that were to happen, we would have to take them off the menu, we would have to reduce our hours, we would have to do things like that.
Okay, so, so you did want to add souvenir items to the list?
We, we would like to put Burgess Orchard's branded shirts and hats, yes.
Okay, so if I just had a quick list of, of items that you would like to sell that you can't currently, under the definition of produce stands, would be flowers, dairy, meat slash prepared foods, baked goods, jams and preserves, farm merchandise. Schwag.
Yes, swag. We, we also included a category for preparation supplies with, a given example as canning jars, and another example is like holiday decor. We were thinking of things like wreaths.
We'd love to be able to sell live garland and things like that.
Okay, oh, farm merchandise, and I see here seasonal household goods such as canning jars, preserving supplies, et cetera, okay. Okay, while we've got Paul and Derek up here, does anybody have any questions for them before we open a public hearing?
Have you considered what the FDA requirements are for handling raw meats?
Yeah, very, very familiar with them.
How would you, how would you deal with that?
We would have to add some things to our kitchen if we decided to do that. We currently already require anyone that works there to have a food handler's permit. It's not technically required, but it's something that we feel better about doing. But that, we would have to work with the Health Department to make sure that the facilities are on par. We, the Health Department stops by quite often, like, we're very familiar with them, and we would have to make sure it's up to par.
Raw meats is a different animal. It's managed by the FDA, and you have to have FDA inspectors.
Okay.
And so the way, way you deal with that normally is either you don't handle raw meats, they come in packaged, they stay packaged.
I guess, I should answer that. So if we were to bring in meat from a seed market, they would come sealed and they would go right in the fridge or freezer.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any meat?
Yeah.
No, no, we, we are not becoming a butcher.
No, we'll just pick up the packaged stuff and put it for sale.
Okay.
The butcher shop is in American Fork. It's very close.
I have one last quick question for you. You used the term, you've looked around at other farm stores and what they're selling, and it's, you know, something that you are looking to do with Burgess Orchards. You had originally asked us to amend the terms of your conditional use permit for, you know, to be, obviously, if you want these expanded offerings, you would probably want, I'm assuming with that additional investment, you'd want to sell these things year-round, but you pulled...
We did.
You, you, you pulled that from the agenda, so I'm just, I'm just, just curious about that, why you, why you pulled that?
It was after speaking with three different neighbors.
Okay, so at this point, that...
Yeah.
Running a year-round farm store is off the table, or will be back on the table at some point?
No, if approved, I hope to not be back here for a really, really long time.
We, to be honest, if we had been approved for year-round, we probably would have been open for ten months out of the year. This, we're currently able to be open nine months out of the year, and for, that seemed like a valid concession.
And just, yeah, the, the concerns were, I think, reasonable. People were worried that since we haven't paved the parking lot, which we didn't want to do to keep the farm aesthetic, it would be slippery, it could be icy, it could be dangerous. I think people were also worried that, you know, you don't have a lot of sunlight hours, and then, you know, you would have cars with their headlights and all these things if it started to get, you know, dark earlier, and even though we could close that sundown, you know, if it's five PM in January, people, you know, people might try to go there, and so it wasn't, it wasn't that important to, to the business, so we didn't expect those to be very busy a month anyways.
Okay, yeah, makes sense, okay.
So, Paul, when you and I talked, I mean, I look at Oliver, Oliver's, I've been there with the hamburgers and different stuff, that's, I believe, commercial zone, not residential. If I go to Ballerina Farms, that's my good friend from high school, that's mainly done online. If you look at things that are done there, and I believe it's also got a commercial location now. Any of the farms that you referenced, are they in a residential area? You're comparing yourself, saying this is the standard. Are any of those in a residential area?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
I'm unaware.
Just have a quick question, Paul. Last time we met, or it was just our, our last meeting, you, you've referenced this many times where you say you're not in it for profit.
That's true.
And so I'm sure that's, that's fine, whatever that means to you, but this is really, this is a store. This is, it just says just jumped right out of a fruit stand, to, in my opinion. This is stuff that you would, I mean, it's great stuff. It's great stuff, but something just feels so much more like a store versus a fruit stand, so I had to see my... Yes, you can, Mr. Burgess.
I feel like... We, we do want to offer more things. I don't, I don't think that you're, you're wrong in what you're saying. We want to offer more than what we're allowed to offer right now.
Well, let me just say one more thing. So we've, we've been through it. I don't blame you for saying we're sick of this, 'cause I think we come off like being really Henri, and I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't want to be the Henri old lady. I'm one of those, but not the Henri part. Anyway, so when we first met and we've gone through, just like, sorry about that. When we go through all this, you know, we aren't, it's not like, oh, you have to come get through us. We're not. We're just pretty reasonable people. We just have to do what's on the books. That's our job, and so if we're not doing that by saying, this doesn't meet, this, this doesn't meet that, that's, then we shouldn't be in this position, right? Okay, so that being said, I feel like every time you come, we keep making, you're asking us for exceptions, and there's no, there's nothing that we gain other than more traffic and you know, you don't feel like you're profitable, but that you're certainly not running something that's just thanks for coming, so I'm just so curious about what you're trying to be.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I'd be really happy to speak to that. I know I probably have caused some confusion by saying in the past that I'm not, you know, I don't do this for, for money. And what I mean by that is land in Alpine is, is really expensive. The amount of money that we've spent on setting up the stand, the land under the stand, buying this parking lot, deeding land for Bateman Lane, expanding Bateman Lane, all sort of like costs of, of running this thing will, in my estimation, never be paid back by...
That's fair, but why didn't you go about it, like, put the cart before the horse and just buy something commercial? Instead of trying to, you know, you, you were wise to try to help with it. We asked about better parking, so you bought Suzanne, you know, Suzanne Tyler's place. That's, that was smart on your part, but for our part, we're still going, oh, but you really can't have a car, a parking lot in a residential area, so I just feel like we're, we're constantly having this conflict because you really need to be commercial, and I know you get your green belt stuff, that's all great. I just don't know how this fits together when really what you're describing is much more, and, and, and I love you have big ideas, like ice cream cells, look at down, I mean, look at where the Rowley barn is. Look further down at the Creamery. I mean, welcome to the state of Utah, ice cream capital of the world. But anyway, so I get... But anyway, so I get that. And you mentioned last time, you're like, I didn't start at the peach shakes, but Van Burgess didn't either. And so when they, we would go get peaches, we just got peaches, and it wasn't your fault. You're right. They did introduce that a little bit last, within the last couple of years. The problem is, is like with your little kid, if he says something, you get in the little scruffle or whatever, and the kid gets bugged, your little kid comes over, and you're trying to stop the fight, and he goes, well, he started it. That's how I felt you reacted to that. Like, they started it. But when you signed off on your CUP, you knew what was required, and you knew that, I mean, that didn't say peach shakes in there. I get it that it sounds like, hey, they're already doing it. But that's a really, that's still, you're responsible for what you signed. So we've really gotten away from that original CUP. I'm just saying, I think you have great vision. You have great vision. And I think your ideas are way bigger than what can happen with a fruit stand. So I just, where do you want to be?
I think I'll just say, you know, I didn't move to Alpine thinking, or anywhere, thinking that I was going to start a farm stand. That wasn't really in my life plans. And, you know, I can let Clark speak to this. It was a little bit like, I got here, I saw that there was a farm stand, there were a lot of people hanging out there. It looked wonderful, like a really family-friendly sort of business, a thing that I think people really loved. And I thought, it would be awesome if this thing could continue, and just stay here forever, and become a sustainable business. And, you know, what I mean by, like, I'm not doing this to make money, like, I don't expect to make back my fixed cost, but I do want the business to be, you know, I'm a capitalist. I want the business to be like a good, logical, sustainable business that, you know, if maybe one day, fortunately, my kids inherit the place, they won't be like, oh, this is a cash drag. They'll say, this is wonderful. You know, it pays for itself, and it makes sense. And I guess I think that the vast, vast majority of residents of Alpine like it. I think people like going there and taking their families there, and if they could buy a few extra items, I think it would be a benefit. So I guess I don't agree that the only thing it's bringing is traffic. I think it's an amenity that people like. And if it wasn't, you know, I wouldn't want to do it either, because, again, I'm not in this, because my life dream was to run a farm stand.
Right. But just, we're an interesting town, aren't we? I mean, we really, we don't have a lot of in and out. We just have the in. So where you're positioned is, consider it with those names I named, we're right on I-15. I mean, it's really interesting to have to, it is a lot of traffic. I know that you think that, because what you're offering is great, but the traffic and safety, we have to really take that seriously. If somebody gets killed on that corner, it gets pretty crowded. It's just the sightlines, a lot of it. And we're not just doing this to try to shut you down. If you could just keep it with what you thought you were going to do in the first place, I just feel like it's expanding, which is great ideas, doesn't fit there. That's all.
Okay, so, no, hey, thanks, Sue. So does anybody have any further questions for Derek and Paul, before we let them sit down, and then we'll open up the public hearing?
Clark, what did you want to say?
Well, I'm thinking that we can have Clark come up for the public hearing, for sure.
Come up for yourself?
Just really quick question, sorry. So what items were you going to add that may, that people want to stay for? Does that make sense? Like, was there hamburgers and hot dogs that they're going to want to stay for?
Like Paul mentioned, a breakfast sandwich is something that we would...
They probably wouldn't really, well, is it going to be like a sit-down? Will they eat it there?
We don't anticipate this being like a big sit-down place. We might add another picnic table or something like that. We're not planning on building out the building or anything like that.
Okay. We've got a few picnic tables now that people will eat their ice cream at.
Or they put a blanket on the grass and they sit down.
To prepare this food, though, is there, are you going commercial kitchen inside?
Whatever the law requires us to do. Like, I was unaware of something that Mr. McKay pointed out, that I, whatever we have to...
If you put in a kitchen, that would be bigger than just breakfast sandwiches. So are we talking cooking meat?
Why would putting a kitchen make it bigger than breakfast sandwiches?
Well, if you're, I'm just asking, is the commercial kitchen for breakfast sandwiches, or are there more pre-prepared foods you're thinking of?
That is our current vision, and there might be some rules that we have to follow that I'm unaware of, and we will follow whatever those rules are.
Jason, my experience in any kind of operation like that requires grease separators before anything is discharged? Would that kind of an operation be required here?
Yes. And they're aware of that, and they've talked to us about it.
So, I mean, it is a pretty costly endeavor to add that item.
Yeah. And we may not do it if it comes back and it's too expensive to do.
Do we have a list? Is that list that was originally brought up with the red and green?
Yeah, yeah, those are the things they...
Itemizing all the things that they're asking for.
Yep.
It's also in the application, but the red and green kind of shows...
So the second one they sent out this morning, the only things they added to that were the merchandise, the hats and the shirts, and then the, let me grab it, farm merchandise, are the things that they've added. But everything else is listed in the original application.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead. Derek, Paul, thanks for that. Appreciate you guys answering those questions. All right, let's go ahead and open up for a public hearing. So come up and...
I'm so excited.
Yeah, clearly, clearly. You nearly sprinted to that point.
Well, I have two midterms tomorrow, so I really missed that.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, name and address.
Hello, neighbors. Your honors, is that how I should address you?
Oh, certainly. Not much honor up here.
Greetings. I'm like, Mr. Chairman, okay. I'm Lily Brown. My address is 1215 Mountain Oak Circle. I'm 18. I'm a student at the University of Utah, and I refuse to quit Burgess. I, like, I will stay here as long as they'll have me. It's been the best job I've ever had. So I'm here to just offer a slightly different, maybe smaller, point of view for you guys. Burgess was my first job. I got it when I was 15 years old. Got it all on my own. They were so willing to hire me. I worked so hard. I was the shift lead. All four years I've worked there, and I've been social media manager for the past two years. So it's been the most amazing opportunity for me.
So that's your fault. You're too good at your job.
Yeah, so maybe they should fire me on that front. But while working at Burgess, I was on the high honor roll in high school. I was on National Honor Society Cabinet. I was the Lone Peak Girls Lacrosse varsity captain, and I started and was president of two clubs. So that and a lot more, I did everything. And Burgess allowed me to be flexible. It allowed me to work when I wanted. It created a work environment that didn't feel like work. It felt like fun. It felt like friends and safety. And Burgess has truly become, like, in my mind, and I think in the mind of so many of my employees that are from Alpine, not my employees, my coworkers that are from Alpine, so many of my friends that are from Alpine that come, and people from outside of Alpine, it's become like more than a fruit stand. It's become more than a produce stand. It's become a place of gathering. It's become a place where you meet friends and family. It's become just a general place that's become a happy institution in Alpine. And it's such a defining factor of the reason Alpine is home to me. Like, it's such a, it's such an integral part of the reason I call Alpine home. So for whatever it's worth, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Wait, can I ask a question?
Yep.
First of all, congratulations on all your success, and I'm sorry about last Saturday night's football.
I was going to say, except for the school up north part.
I do have one question. Since you're over social media, you've done a great job of bringing people from all over the state to the facility. Have you done anything to help compensate, to pay for the costs associated with the expansion in the building and the parking lot by selling things online, which would not impact traffic or any challenges with the general area? So are you doing anything with selling anything online?
So I just do content creation.
Okay.
I make videos. I like, it's kind of just a way to get the employees...
You create the FOMO.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I, like, it's kind of just a way to get the employees involved.
But we're not selling anything online right now?
No.
So we could compensate or increase revenues to help fund the facility by maybe selling stuff online? Would that be something realistic?
Yeah, maybe. I like, I suppose so, if you were to create an online platform for that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
You're going places. Congrats.
Build the group, 168 West Cascade. Good evening. First, kudos to Derek and Paul. I've got to give credit where credit is due. Remember, some time ago, last year, those of you that are familiar with the fiasco we had last season, when they first opened up their new facility, it was a nightmare. But they have taken steps at great expense to themselves to improve that, and I'm, I stand here happy with the situation that we have today. That parking lot that was Sister Tyler's, Suzanne Tyler's residence, top-notch job, the screening wall we couldn't be happier with in our own backyard, they've stepped up and done everything that we had asked them to do. And in looking at the traffic flow today, it is vastly different and better than it was a year ago. So Bateman is easy access in and out there now that we have just one side of the street allowed for parking.
Bill, are you still getting cars parked, you know, up on your streets?
No.
Like you were in the past?
No, I, we might have had one or two days, that we might have had a couple of cars up there. I noticed one or two people liked to park right there at the beginning of Cascade in front of the retention area pond that is adjacent to our property. But aside from that, I'm not seeing any parking on our street. Correct me if I'm wrong, anybody else that is here that lives on Cascade, but I'm not seeing that. And on Bateman, originally, we had some, you know, it was a bit of a learning curve when the no parking signs went up, but I'm not seeing any parking on the water retention side of Bateman anymore. We still have a bit of a problem on the highway. Occasionally, you see folks parking out on Alpine Highway. I'm not sure if and when we're going to see new signs out there that says no parking during the winter months, and just say no parking, period. Since now we have a bike lane, per state law, I think it was February of this year, that that's no longer lawful to park, to impede any bicyclists that'll be in that bike lane. That's the only concern I have as far as parking out there. But what I'm seeing, based on the work that Derek and Paul coordinated, the traffic situation is vastly improved, and it seems to be handling their traffic flow just fine. And my question, I guess, to Derek and Paul, do you have any idea in terms of, based on what you want to add to the conditional use permit in terms of selling from your store, any feel for what percentage of an increase in traffic flow you might have? I mean, what are we looking at potentially in terms of number of cars being added?
I don't think that will be a significant increase in traffic. If it is, I think it'll be in the morning hours, and there's not very much traffic. It's a type of...
We only have two traffic levels. Those are peach ice cream.
I have two guys who are... Hey, Bill, we are really concerned about parking because of the issues last year.
I was really embarrassed about it. I want to be a good neighbor, and that was bad. And I think, you know, we tried to solve it as fast as we could. Our understanding of what customers come to us for is they really come in large numbers for only two products. One is peach ice cream, and one is apple you pick. And I, we think that by adding additional items, we could sell more items to the people that are already waiting in line, are already spending a lot of time there. But I don't think people are going to come to us for the other items, because those aren't, those aren't actually distinctive to Burgess Orchards. People come to Burgess Orchards because we grow peaches, and they hear about the peach ice cream on Instagram. And, you know, our other items, we're not going to have, you know, we're not going to grow those locally, so those won't really be famous. And I think on the point about online sales, part of the reason I'm not that optimistic about being able to sell many things online is just because our best two products, apple you pick and peach ice creams, neither of them can be experienced online. And our other products will be more like, nice, you know, but it's like, if we're selling Mozita's meat, it doesn't really make sense for someone to buy Mozita's meat from us online, or to rush to our store, unless they're already local, already there.
I, my comment was just, I buy Ballerina Farms meat, and I was just assuming that you'd rebrand it, and you'd put it with your name, and do some other stuff, just based off your past experience and your marketing ability to get people there and stuff.
I wish we had the poll that Ballerina Farms does on it. She's great.
So just to close, I'm in favor of being open to changes to the CUP, to allow them to sell more. To what extent, that's up for debate, and that's why we're here, right? But I think they've earned the trust of the community based on the steps they've taken over the past year to improve the situation. And as I mentioned to Derek on a number of occasions, my number one concern is adequate parking. And can we handle the traffic that's coming in and out of there, regardless of what they're selling? So as long as we can do that successfully, I think we should be a bit open-minded about what they can and can't sell.
So just one point of just clarification, so you'll understand our discussion. What's before us is not an amendment to their conditional use permit. What's before us is amending the definition of a produce stand.
Okay.
So it becomes somewhat of an important distinction. I just want to make sure that we all understood that.
Understood.
But otherwise, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Cheryl DeGroot, 168 West Cascade Avenue. And I love that man with all my heart, but that doesn't mean I always agree with him.
I was wondering about that.
I do have a couple of things from other people who couldn't be here tonight. Can I read that and not eat into my own time?
If you can do it quickly, because we...
I will, super quick.
The night's getting late, and there's, you know, other people.
Okay, Bob Schirmer, 150 Cascade Avenue, said, "The current produce stand definition clearly outlines what is permitted for sale. Any proposed changes or additions should maintain this level of specificity to ensure clarity and consistent enforcement. The provision requiring that the majority of products offered for sale be cited on the lot on which they have been grown has been removed from the proposed language and should be reinstated. Without this requirement, the operation could function more like a traditional retail store sourcing products from external suppliers. To preserve the integrity and intent of a produce stand, the majority of products should originate from the grow, excuse me, growers' own property. The reference to meat prepared in a licensed facility should be removed as it represents a broad category that, according to the city's own comments in the agenda, could encompass items such as hamburgers, hot dogs, and deli meats. These products are not consistent with the nature of a produce stand, which is distinct from a restaurant operation. Allowing raw packaged meat may be more appropriate and aligned with the intent of selling fresh agricultural products. The phrase "or animal products" appears redundant as eggs, dairy, and meat are already explicitly listed. This wording should be removed unless a clear definition is provided to justify its inclusion. The reference to ready-to-eat products should be removed. According to the city's own comments in the agenda, this could include items commonly found in the restaurant business. These products are not consistent with the nature of a produce stand, which is distinct from a restaurant operation." And then I have one more thing here, really quick, to read, and then I'll go on to my own comments. This is from Barry Butler. I don't know what his address is. It's on Cascade Avenue. They're stuck in Springville, et cetera. "My biggest concern with Burgess wanting to change the definition on a fruit stand is even more traffic will encroach on our quiet neighborhood with increased goods and services. Selling hamburgers and the like will increase the seasonality of the fruit stand, which equates to more traffic for longer periods of time, and potentially more liability accidents when Bateman Hill ices up, an accident literally waiting to hap." So those are their comments. One thing I would like to start with for my own comment is Burgess Orchard published, or whatever, on their Facebook page, something that I feel is, was misleading. And I don't think that their intent necessarily was to mislead, but it definitely was misleading for people that I've talked to. Keep talking? Okay. It says, as part of their post, "Unfortunately, strange," oh, they were just saying, you know, "So many of you have visited us for fresh peaches, ice cream, and apple picking. Thank you. Unfortunately, strange as it may sound, the property is currently zoned residential, and our ability to operate has repeatedly come under question. We are now asking the city of Alpine to rezone our farm stand to commercial. Doing so would allow us to confidently continue running the stand, as well as expand our offerings." It has never been in question whether or not the stand could continue to run. And my concern is, in the comments that I read, and in people that I have talked to, they think that if we don't, if the planning commission and then the city council doesn't approve all of these things, that they are in danger of closing down. I think everybody in Alpine can say they love the ice cream and everything else. I find it interesting that in the request to change the produce stand definition, that they did not include ice cream, because contrary to popular belief, it is not grandfathered in, and so that should be listed. But I don't think necessarily that a lot of these other But I don't think necessarily that a lot of these other things should be listed. So I think the majority of these items sold should come from their lot, so that should not be removed. I'd like to know what they mean by value-added products produced off-site because that is very confusing to me. Raw honey should remain as listed. They are not a grocery store. Dairy should be more of a specific, like I said, about the ice cream and what exactly do they plan to sell. Fresh eggs should also remain as previously listed. Again, they are not a grocery store. They are a produce stand. Meat should be removed altogether. Baked goods should be removed as they are also not a bakery and we have no idea where these items would prepared. Jams, preserves, and beverage, beverages, well, beverages was taken out. Also bring into question where they're coming from, commercial kitchens or home bottled. I was at a city council meeting, I will refrain from naming who said it, but one of the city council members said, "Well, I would love, my wife would love to sell her bread there." I don't think that they have a commercial kitchen at their house and therefore they should not be able to sell in this place. Ready to eat is the biggest concern that I have. Again, they're not a cafe, they're not a restaurant, they're a produce stand, a very successful one. I'm happy for them. I think that they're great guys. And like Sue said, you know, they've got a great vision and good for them. But I think that where they're situated on Alpine Highway with only two really main roads into Alpine just causes so much congestion. A week ago Saturday, if you read my email that I sent you last week, a week ago Saturday, I went down, I, I was leaving my house and I just turned on my video and all the way down Bateman, all the places were, were filled. The entire orchard parking lot, the fruit stand parking lot was filled and the one, yes, okay, I'm going really fast. And Suzanne Tyler's old one was completely filled. And like, again, good for them, but if you add things to what they're already selling, what else is going to happen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know, Bill?
I do.
Oh, just curious.
We, we hope you're still talking tonight.
I can give you a ride home. We have our own cars. Even better.
Seems like an appropriate time to follow up that one. Clark Burgess, 905 East 300 North Alpine. So we had the orchard for a hundred years. And I worked full-time, my dad worked full-time. We ran it out of that little stand and we did everything we could to survive. We were both working full-time, farming on the side. It was a lot of work. Did we make money? A little bit. We were thrilled when Paul wanted to keep it as an orchard because we could have subdivided it easily, right? We wanted to keep it as Alpine. And I think one of the, if you look online, what draws people to Alpine, one of the top five things is that orchard and that stand. And we had so many people come who were from the East Coast and they wanted an experience of having been on the farm. And you don't get that anywhere else. You don't get that at the Red Barn, you don't get that at Ballerina, you get it at Burgess Orchard, walking down the orchard row and picking an apple. And I just love what they're doing. And I, and I hate seeing city council people who go in there and say, "Oh, you can't sell cookies or you can't sell donuts because they're not made with apples." I think that's gone beyond the reach. They're trying their best. Cut flowers, who's going to complain about selling cut flowers? We used to, we used to sell bread. We sold honey from Amron Frazier. So that was the local honey. Mindy Hunter was the local caramel. We had a lady make bread and bring bread. We had pottery people come and brought up a little stand to sell pottery. We were scraping everything we could. I was a state employee, we didn't make anything. You know, now I'm a little bit better off. I don't have to worry. And I love what they're doing with our orchard by our house because it's, we lease it to them and we plan on keeping it forever, even though you have a one-lane road there, which I wish you'd fix, but you're not going to because you're waiting for us to sell and it's not going to happen for 30 years. So you decide what you're going to do with that. It's not in your controls, a planning commission, but it could be city council. So anyway, I love what they're doing and I don't think they're trying to, they're, they're not going to, how many days a year are they so busy that parking is an issue? Two or three days, two or three weekends where they do a you pick? Besides that, it's not as bad as, you know, it used to be. I mean, down when we sold, we thought somebody was going to kill going both ways, you know, pulling in and out. And so I loved having them put a new fruit stand over there and it looks really nice. And they put a lot of money into that. And they put a lot of money into that parking lot. And they put a lot of money into Whitey Bateman Lane that, you know, I hope you recognize that. And I've heard some things they want to do at the house for the city. And so Paul and Derek are all about helping the city. So anyway, if you have any questions?
Yes.
Okay. I love the stand. You know, one last comment. My wife hated selling it, but after we sold it, she said, "I'm so glad we sold it because I would not have survived what they're having to go through now to have, to run a business."
Thank you.
Good evening. Hello? Does this one work better?
I think they're both on your
Really doesn't matter, you got to eat the mic. Tim McCann, 11 Cascade Avenue, Alpine. I'll just start before I, I read my statement that I prepared. A month ago, I had a visitor come in from out of town from Mongolia and she was at work. She said she wanted to try some local produce. So I stopped by the peach stand, bought six peaches, brought them to work the next day. And she was like, "Oh my gosh, that was the best peach I have ever tasted in my life." And she, she just couldn't get enough of it. She raved on about it. And, and I was, I was really proud that that was just down the street. It was grown just down the street from my house and it gave me a sense of pride in our community. I really, really enjoyed that. I'm here to urge you to amend the definition of a fruit stand as stated, to permit the sale of homemade goods and wholesome products alongside produce grown on-site. This change would sustain and enhance the remarkable community hub the fruit stand has become. Ten years ago, the property along Alpine Highway was blight and, and a safety hazard. It had a dangerous one-way road with a blind turn, no parking, weeds, trash along fences, decomposing animals, and broken down vehicles. Today, the new owners have transformed it into a safe, welcoming space with off-street parking, clean landscaping, a two-lane road with clear visibility and consistent cleaning. Ongoing beautification efforts have made it a local gem. Artists even use it as a backdrop for painting classes, celebrating Alpine's rural charm. The fruit stand is more than a business, it's a cornerstone of our community. It provides a safe, flexible workspace for our youth, including three of my own children. They have gained confidence managing customers and other employees, learning teamwork, coordinating tasks, and developed responsibility. They thrive in a supportive environment and look forward to delicious homemade treats at the end of their shifts. I think they like that better than what they get paid, honestly. These experiences build skills and community ties. Additionally, they have converted an old house on the property into a simple community library, offering books and a cozy space for residents to connect, further enriching Alpine's cultural fabric. The current code limits fruit stand to selling only on-site produce, restricting our ability to sustain this environment space, or this
I propose amending the definition to include homemade goods, like baked pies, jams, wholesome products such as local honey or artisan crafts. And I'm, I'm honestly in support of whatever they do because what they touch is awesome. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Tim.
My name's James Lund and I'm to the county just north of y'all. And people come down to Alpine for your fruit. They want your peaches and they want your apples. You're not going to have more traffic if you throw in a sandwich and a diet coke to go along with a bushel of fruit. Seriously? I mean, it's a very reasonable request. The capital improvement and the safety benefits that these gentlemen connected with the Burgess Orchard's family and their orchard and, and the money that's been spent to take this little unsafe country road into your little piece of paradise here, which I love. My daughter married into the Burgess family. She's the one that was responsible for coming up with the great idea of throwing in some ice cream and putting fresh Burgess peaches over that ice cream. I helped the Burgess family broker fruit in Salt Lake City, okay? Salt Lake City is just one big sprawl. There are no more orchards. There are no more farms, okay? I grew up on Winder Dairy. Winder Dairy doesn't exist any longer, okay? People like to come and buy something, they can see where it's grown or where it's raised. Ever been up to a great restaurant called Maddox up in Box Elder County on your way to Logan? People love to look out and see the cattle and the sheep grazing, knowing, hey, that's sort of that farm to table, orchard to table. If people can come and get their fruit, they want to get a sandwich, they want to get a drink along with it. I think the traffic and the safety has increased immensely. I got nervous over the last 10 years as I came down and saw the pinch point, people parking on the other side of the highway to walk across the stand. Thank goodness no one was hurt, no fatalities, because that scared the death out of me and I told that to Clark every time I saw him. So I think the requests are reasonable and I know all of the hundreds of customers from Salt Lake who come down to see your beautiful area, they're after the fruit. If you throw in a couple other products, you already have beef jerky. Let them throw some ham sandwiches together or whatever. The critical part of that language, if I could just point this out, it's on-site, okay? Long before there were, there were neighborhoods and long before For acres and acres and of the other four or five families, acres and acres of orchards. So now it's on-site. That word site, S-I-T-E, is critical. And all that they want to do and sell, Derek doesn't want to do dogs. That's not what this is all about. He wants to do reasonable, connected products that people enjoy. So when they come down to get a bushel or two of fruit to can, that's what they want to do. So thank you.
Thank you, James.
Good evening. Tim McDaniel, 44 West Cascade. I'm going to limit my comments toward the revised definition. I'm supportive of what is being proposed with two exceptions. One is for meat that in my mind does not correlate with produce stand. A produce stand to me is apples, peaches, and all the byproducts associated with that. So I would exclude meat and I would also exclude any prepackaged activities. And I think introducing kitchen activity, I think to your point, Michelle, really does up the game and I don't, I don't think that's appropriate for the, for the stand. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and for doing this. I know it must be really hard and it's going really late and we need to spit, stick to what's on the agenda, okay? A fruit stand. I'm just a little
I'm sorry, did you give us your name? I'm not sure I caught that.
Alpine.
What was your name?
Lori Loder and I live 284 West Sunset Drive and they are right behind me. I've lived in Alpine for 34 years and I've invested my life and my soul into making Alpine better and service and stuff like that. They've only been here two years. I really liked Susan what you said. Thank you very much. You guys, it should just be a fruit stand, period. They knew what they were getting into when they signed, like you said. Fruit stand, period. No more. The traffic is very, very dangerous and we have a hard time with water. I have to cut back on my water and not worry about my trees dying while these new people move in. I know, I'm sorry. And please hear me and please vote for me. Please be my voice, please. No bothering.
Thank you, Lori.
Sarah Blackwell, 457 East View Drive. I just had a question. Like, why do we need to change the definition of produce stand? Can't you first just change the conditional use permit or is that putting the cart before the horse?
Well, what's before us is a, an application to change the definition of a produce stand. So what isn't before us is a request to change the conditional use permit, but the CUP would have to follow
The definition.
The definition of a conditional use.
Oh, okay.
The, the CUP is like operations, like how long they can be open, different things like that. The, the definition is what they could sell there. So they're just two
I see. Okay.
And also thinking about any kind of zone change.
Right. It's, it's just
This is still on a residential piece of land.
Right. Okay. Yeah, because when I look up the definition of produce, it says refers to fresh fruits and vegetables, although other food products such as dairy products or nuts are sometimes included. I don't know. I kind of just, I'm just a, like, here's the rule, this is what we should follow. If that's why we have rules, that's why we have ordinances, that's kind of where my thought goes is to produce stand. I, I love their ideas. I've met with both of them, they're great. I just think, could they not have a commercial building off-site, somewhere where they can have the freedom to do whatever they want to do, but keep the produce, a produce stand? That's, that's my two cents, but.
Thank you, Sarah.
Name's Robert Jones, I'm at 159 Cascade Avenue and I've been in Alpine for 34 years also. And I knew Van Burgess very well, he was my neighbor and we got along great. Loved his peaches, loved his apples. And I'd like to commend everybody that's gotten up here today and say, how great that the business has been for Derek and Paul. And that's, that's awesome. But that's not what we're here for. We're here to see if they want to change the conditional, the definition of an orchard. They're doing great with the way it is now. There is no reason to change it and add these additional products. I am definitely against that. I think it's going to increase traffic, it's going to make them want to expand even further and further. They're going to push for more hours, they're going to push to be open year-round. Leave it the way it is. That is more than enough right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Hey, just a quick comment. So, hey, we'll, we'll, we'll stay here all night, if everybody wants to stay here all night. But if somebody has already said what you thought you would come up and say, hey, First Amendment, public hearing, come say what you want to say.
Does anybody have any snacks?
At some point, we, yeah, snacks or a restroom break or something.
Someone really needs a snack.
Yeah. So anyway, but, but, but I don't, yeah, I certainly don't want to chill anybody from coming up, just, just make that statement.
I'll be brief. My name is Jeanette Kennedy and I live at 168 West Cascade Avenue, DeGroot's rental apartment. I've only lived in Alpine about two and a half years. So fruit stand, produce stand, new concept, born and raised in Las Vegas, so we didn't have orchards and, you know, trees that produce fruit in Las Vegas. So this was a brand-new concept to me. I love the Burgess Orchard and I love the fact that there's green trees, fruit. I've frequented the Burgess Orchard a lot and had their peach shakes and enjoy that. I've taken my family over, new concept to them and they've enjoyed it as well. So complimentary to them. I'm here to say that I'm against renaming and the definition of the produce stand. I feel like I've been around Utah and I've seen the other fruit stands and seen the produce stands and kind of want to keep Alpine and agree with the neighborhood that I feel like by selling additional items, it's going to cause more traffic. I've seen it before they built the new structure and I've seen it after the new structure and I appreciate the additional parking, that has helped so much and I fear for Bateman and the additional traffic and the parking. One thing that I would like to say in addition to all the other things that were said, I've noticed that they've had during the summer, these like music nights I've noticed that they've had during the summer, these like music nights on the weekends and things like that and it causes, causes people to gather, which means the cars stay in the parking lot longer. So there's less parking in the parking lot and at Bateman. I don't know if, I don't think that that's happening now as it gets colder and things like that. But has any, when you go to Oliver's and some of these other things, has there been studies done on how long, you know, a car is going to be in the parking lot? While you go in, get a sandwich, these families sit, they, you know, sit out on the, the grass and they gather and now you're offering entertainment. You are talking about a parking problem when now you're not offering just an ice cream dessert. Now you're offering food. So that is something that I would like you to take into consideration when you are redefining a farm stand and you're offering now food product in addition to just fruit, vegetables and things like that, in addition to just ice cream sundaes.
Thank you, Jeanette.
Chris Sutton, I live at 66 Cascade Avenue. Is the city, I was under the impression that the city was still working on a mass, updating their master plan and updating the zoning ordinances. It seems to me that if that is what's currently being taken care of by the city council and the planning commission, that maybe we should finish that first before we try to say what we want in the produce stand. When I moved here 25 years ago, everybody that I met told me I did not live in the city limits. I was not a resident of Alpine. That was before we had a roundabout. Now we have a roundabout that's kind of, kind of a, you know, you can figure out where it is. But that's because the city ordinances said on the edges of town, you're supposed to have larger lots, more rural areas, more open spaces. My neighborhood was joined, was zoned residential, which it still is, but it's on the edge of town. But it seems like somehow having commercial in the middle of the town has now moved to the edge of the town, because now I live on the edge of town where we want commercial. It's okay to have a produce stand, it's okay to have an orchard, but not when it becomes so commercial that you don't have residential anymore and you don't have open spaces. And so I think that's maybe a consideration for waiting and deciding what the city really wants before you decide how you want the produce stand to be. Almost all the candidates that run for city office say, we love living in Alpine. It's rural, it's friendly, it's safe, we want to raise our families here. And we all want that atmosphere, but maybe we don't want it in our neighborhood. Maybe this, I think the things here are good, but the space that they've got to put it on, the amount of property that's available is just not quite enough for visions of what they have to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thomas Olson, 481 South Alpine Highway. Some of you probably got an awkward voicemail, that was me. Anyways, as it's written for the CUP.
You're the guy with the good beard.
Sorry?
You're the guy with the good beard.
Oh, I guess so, it's there, I don't really see it much. It's below my sightline.
Those things called mirrors? I just, I, I heard about them.
I can do a tie, but a beard's, so the CUP as it is in 3.23, sorry, How the CUP is written doesn't seem like a bad thing. That I don't think needs to be changed, but that's also not what's up here. However, produce, if you walk into Macy's, Walmart, wherever, Costco, produce, if you're in that section, it's things that are grown, things that are grown out of the dirt, things that are grown off trees, off of vines. So I'm not much a fan of big government. So in this case, yes, I'm in favor of reducing the size of the definition of produce stand. There's a lot of things like milk, you don't grow milk, you don't grow cheese. Well, mold grows, but that's a whole different story. But I'm in agreement with what they're trying to do for the most part. My wife and I, we've fought over this plenty enough. Produce stand, this is past what a produce stand is. I would like to suggest instead of trying to grow the definition of a produce stand, instead, maybe shrink down produce stand and then we can add a new definition, something to go into section 3.1.110. Make a new definition for farm stand. And this could be something, we can definitely go over it in further detail. I mean, they've already got plenty of stuff. What they have now would be awesome, that's a great start, it's fantastic. But ultimately, if we're changing a definition or if we're adding a definition, it really does matter, because what we're doing is setting up Alpine's future. If we can set these things up now, I mean, poor Paul and Derek, they're basically a guinea pig at this point. But if we can get it right and set up now, when the next business comes into Alpine, at least there's definitions, oh, this is, this is going to be easier for them to follow. We can set up a blueprint so these new businesses, if they want to come to Alpine, it's a little bit easier for them to come in, they have a better option. Just growing the produce stand definition, I mean, it could be a good Band-Aid for now, but sometimes in my, in my line of work, Band-Aids become permanent, which is terrible. But I like what they're doing. My wife and I, we don't have too many issues with what they're doing, the whole sandwiches and burgers. That's a little bit new to me, we, we thought ready to eat meant ice cream, which anyways, yeah. I think that's about what I meant to say. The voicemail probably said the same thing, sorry.
Thanks.
Reduce produce stand and make a farm stand definition.
And Thomas, just a quick comment on that. A farm stand or a farm store can always be operated on a parcel, parcel land that's owned commercial.
Yep.
Yes, but if you can kind of, instead of commercial set store, let's it down to a farm stand. Something like Oliver's or the other ones that have been mentioned, just not like that scale. Just scale it down to something that's attractive.
Yeah, it, it's a good thought, because there, there really are, you know, a couple of other avenues, right? Which is a farm store or farm stand becomes a conditional use and is, and is defined as such, and then of course it goes through all this process. Or a farm store, farm stand is expanded beyond what a produce stand is, so is, is really a commercial application. But, I mean, good thinking, I mean, I've, I've had some similar thoughts, so anyway, appreciate that. And thanks for your voicemail too. I did listen to it.
Chris Strindy, 43 East Cascade. I just want to thank Derek and Paul. I feel like they've bent over backwards to, to, you know, accommodate us and, and make sure that, you know, everything they're doing is in keeping with the community and, and making sure everyone's happy, so, no, thank you. I, I, I want to echo the comment earlier that they've gained our trust and I, and I appreciate what they've, what they've done. And we love the, we love the farm stand, it's great.
The produce stand.
Yeah, yeah, the produce. I, I am, I am in support of some thoughtful, specific amendments to the definition to allow them to sell more, I think. I think a lot of what they're proposing to sell is in keeping with Alpine's, the spirit of Alpine, the spirit of the produce store. I'm a little concerned about, you know, the hamburgers and I feel like this kind of opens a door to expanding into a restaurant, which I, I don't know if we want a restaurant right there. I, I don't think that a lot of the things they're proposing that they add to the definition will increase the traffic. I think they're, you know, a lot of those people are there for the ice cream and, and mainly and, and I think some of these things will be good for additional sell-through, but I don't think they'll necessarily increase the traffic. So, I mean, generally, I'm very supportive of what they're doing and, and we're so glad that they're part of our community. That could have been a subdivision, instead we have this wonderful orchard and so that's a huge benefit to the area that we live in. Anyway, those are my thoughts, but I, I had a question about the five acre, the proposed five acre definition or addition to the definition. Would that, if like my kids, we, I live on a half an acre, right? If I wanted to sell eggs, we have like, you know, a dozen chickens and a dozen, you know, trees of our own, would that preclude, you know, my kids from being able to sell, you know, produce or eggs on the corner of our, of our lot?
They could probably have a Kool-Aid stand and sell a couple of legs.
Lemonade law, is that the one under the lemonade law?
Yeah.
Or, you know, things like, anyway, you know, because I, I don't know how many people have five acres. I, I certainly don't, I wish I did. But anyway, I, I would encourage you to, to put a lot more weight, I think, on the Holbrooks and the DeGruets and, and the Olsons and, and others that live in that immediate area, I think.
Which DeGroot?
Just Bill.
Husband and wife.
All right. But, yeah, so I, you know, I, I have a lot less at stake than they do, so I would encourage.
Thanks, Chris.
Commission to, to weigh their opinions more heavily. Anyway, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Andrew Young, 1371 East 490 South. Just a couple of quick things. So this will ultimately be the residents' decision. This is your decision, okay? The, you who live by it. You're going to outlast any city council, any planning commission, this is your decision. But I hope to share a couple of things. I've been meeting for the last month with Paul and Derek and I know the Burgess well. I've also been meeting with the residents. I respect them both and y'all received a victory that I've almost never had or we never get. And they, and so I just want to pass on a couple of things to think about, okay? It's still your decision. They, they rescinded the commercial, they gave it up, the commercial rezone. I'm, I'm going to go home and party over that tonight, okay? Y'all received a victory that is like better than Christmas morning. That was the biggest threat we could have had. So, so that, and they apologized. That, that means they're trying, they're trying. This isn't how usually people behave. I've been doing this for, since I was 12 years, years old here in Alpine. Most developers lawyer up and pound us, okay? And they generally can win that way. And there generally isn't a compromise, so they're, they're at least trying. So I just, I just want you to know, that's, that's a rare thing. There's also a couple of other things. We're selling cigarettes a stone throw away from this place, okay? We're selling energy drinks, we're selling all types of weird stuff and there's a whole bunch of developers, do you know this, that we're selling all that stuff? Just at the junction, okay? So, so I'm looking at Alpine, I'm looking where I grew up and I, and they're selling fruits. So, so we've got a couple of good things and we got people willing to work with us and you're this close to solving this, you're this close to getting it. This doesn't happen, usually they bulldoze, build whatever they want. And then we also have one other threat. And that's a bunch of developers looking at all of that land and trying to put much worse stuff. High density, they want to put car washes, coffee shops, all, anything they can get their mitts on, okay? So just, just know you have someone willing to work with you that.
Hey, Andrew, are you, I mean, basically you come up here and make comments to the planning commission?
Sorry, I, I. I apologize, is this disrespectful?
Well, a little bit.
I apologize, I was, I was just.
Because I get that you're running for office, I'm just trying to understand if you're making a campaign speech?
No, no, no.
Or, or if you have input to the planning commission.
I apologize, I'll look this way. I, I was trying to give them, only because I can hear.
Well, they can hear you.
No, no, I, I meant, I can hear behind me when I'm sitting down and I, and I understand the frustrations. I'm, I'm trying to soothe it.
Okay, well, you're down to whatever minutes.
I, I, I think that's what I was trying to say and just, just to consider that there's a, we're, we're on a good stride. That was all I was trying to say. If I might have 10 seconds, I have 10 seconds.
Sure. Take 30.
There's only one thing that I think would fix this, respected planning commissioners. If you have one amendment to what you do, if you have one thing to it that just allows you to renew whatever their permit is, you will always have the residents in control, they will never be able to overshoot, they will never be able to take advantage, as long as you keep that independent, whatever it is. So that, in whatever form this ends up as, being something that they have to renew, whether it's the permit or however you go about it, the residents will never be, you know, overwhelmed. I apologize, I didn't mean to be disrespectful.
Okay, thank you, Andrew, appreciate it.
Oh, I lost it. Okay, hello, I'm Brittany Willison, 186 Sunset Drive. My family and I moved to Alpine in 2020 and then I convinced my in-laws to become my neighbor in 2023. We lived next to the orchard and my husband and I became very worried once it became for sale. I felt like I needed to win the lottery in order to preserve the beautiful trees and ensure it wasn't made into a bunch of homes. I was more than pleasantly surprised when the lot was purchased and there was immediate cleanup of the overgrown sidewalk on Bateman. I was actually surprised the city had allowed it to get so bad. I also love the continued landscaping they've done on nearby properties. Thank you Paul and Derek for helping our neighborhood become more beautiful. While I was initially concerned about the widening of Bateman and moving the fruit stand to a spot that would impact traffic near my home, it has been such a great and beautiful addition to our city, especially now that the parking lot is there. I love walking my daughters, niece and nephew home from school, being able to stop by to get peaches. It really contributes to the small town feel that drew our families here. I would love Burgess to add more items for sale, especially meat. My personal values align with sourcing meat ethically and knowing where it comes from. I know neighbors have concerns, but I feel like the rolies and the goos have really listened and have come up with solutions to these concerns, such as removing the music when they found out neighbors didn't like it. My sister-in-law Elizabeth Wilson is at home near the orchard right now, working on giving birth and says, I support the requested adjustments to their current definition and restrictions. I agree with Bill DeGroot that the goos and rolies have gone above and beyond what is expected and worked hard to keep neighbors happy. They have earned our respect. Like Tim McCann, I trust in their ability to gather and sell locally made and artisan goods that would augment their image. I do not think the speculation about traffic is justified. The biggest traffic issues are occurring north of the roundabout, not the fruit stand. To offer a different perspective, I see many cars parked along the streets of our neighborhood during big college football games like last weekend and they are parked there longer than the visitors at the fruit stand. But it allows a sense of community. I urge the planning commission to allow this updated definition, allow this business to continue to be an example of what makes the community, community of Alpine great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howdy, I'm Tyler Hoag, I live at 830 South East Mountain Circle. Good to meet you all and thanks for, for allowing me to talk. I'll just make five quick points. The first one is, as a consumer, I would love to buy more products from Burgess Farms if they had meat, if they had eggs, if they had more produce, I would love to buy it, as would my wife and in-laws who also live in Alpine. The second is, I know there's been some questions about the motivation and profit motive here and I don't think Paul knows I'm going to say this, but a couple of years ago, Paul reached out to me cold and said that he had moved to Alpine, Utah from the Bay Area and I was pretty shocked, because I knew he was the co-founder of a, a very successful business. And I asked him, Paul, where, where are you building and why did you move in? Oh, we're building at 645 South Alpine Highway, we're already living close by in Lehigh. I said, do you have kids and why did you choose Alpine? Short answer, this is Paul, I'm betting it's the best place in America to raise a family, the values, the governance, the nature and the growth, and that it's not San Francisco. And I replied, man, I can tell we're going to get along great, we should have a goer for dinner. So Paul's motives are to be a steward of Alpine and I've seen that for the past three years and I really appreciate how he's kind of operated the orchard and has been very kind and a great business person as well, offering incredible products and I would love for them to be able to offer more, so I strongly support that. I would also support if they chose to go back to proposing the commercial license, I would support that as well, because I find it strange that a group can debate whether they should be able to do 50% above or below things they're produced on. It's just very weird to me. If they operate a business, they should be able to operate a business, but I understand they've changed their ask because they're very accommodating people and I support that change in accommodation and asking for, for new things to sell. The third thing I'd say is that they've chose to preserve the orchard, which to me was the biggest concern I had when he told me he was moving here. I thought he was going to sell the lots and build homes. My in-laws were also scared and when they heard that he was going to preserve the orchard, they were incredibly relieved. And as a business person, I would be very nervous trying to run a business, knowing that at any moment I couldn't decide what to sell or what not to sell or I have to go to get permission to sell an egg or, or meat. And I would probably be tempted to. And I would probably be tempted to sell those lots and develop them and make, you know, much more money than I would selling peach ice cream. So, I appreciate that they haven't done that, and I just think it's great that they're preserving the orchard, and I really do love that. And the last thing is, I really do think there's valid concerns that have been brought up, that the commission should be, should care a lot about, like parking and like crowds. And I think those are the valid concerns that Paul and the group have been tried to be very open to and fixing. And I think they've done a great job with parking and will continue to do that. I also think there's some, call it invalid, concerns that we should be less concerned about that I've already shared. But that's it. I support it, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tyler.
Holbrook, one seventy-seven West Cascade. Hopefully, you're getting to the end. I wasn't sure I'd be able to be here tonight, so I have emailed all of you some comments that I think you probably have already gotten, so I'll keep it very short. My one concern, many have brought up, is that they don't feel that the parking is, or that the traffic is really an issue. And it really, the parking lot has greatly improved it. However, on the busy days, as the house closest to the stand, we do still see parking from occasion in front of our stand. And my concern is that that might increase with a lot more products being offered. Should a few more products be offered, you know, flowers or whatever, I don't see how that could really be a harm, especially if they're not in the ice cream line. People in the ice cream line stay a long time. But if they're in a other kind of line, maybe it would add to it. That's my only real concern with maybe changing the produce stand. But I think changing it to help them a little bit more could be a benefit, but we need to be very specific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristin Hagan, and I live at eight one eight South Alpine Highway. I had a lot of other comments, but a lot of them had been said. But one thing that really stands out to me is that I know we have a unique situation in Alpine when it comes to preserving what we have for the future and our approach to business and commercial and residential. I think one thing about the amendment to this that would be positive is that they are working something that is working. We've seen a lot of businesses come and go, and we've seen a lot of them fail and not be successful. I lived at six seventy-seven Alpine Highway before we moved to the land that we have now, which was one house down from the orchard. And I walked my kids down to the roundabout, and we stopped for an apple, and then the traffic got crazy, and we stopped walking down the highway, and then we moved. But I'm grateful to see that it's changed again. But what I've also seen is that they have been successful in bringing something to this community that I would love to see others have the same opportunity to do. I am grateful about how thoughtful they have been about considering neighbors' needs, but also the city in general. I think we need places that we can come together. We need places that our youth can come, that families can visit. And I think that this opens the pathway for other opportunities that would also be successful. And I know that, you know, there's going to be challenges we'll have to address with any change. And I think that's good to be concerned and realistic, but I think it's important to consider the positive opportunities that this sets up, not just for them, but for others in the city in the future as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
I will also try to keep my comments to what has not been said. Sorry, Jennifer Wadsworth, they live at one eight eight Parkway West. And I had the opportunity to serve with the Americorps, so I've seen a lot of communities, big and small. And the determining factor for those communities and how they felt when I was educating there was so determined on the third spaces, which Kristin briefly touched on there. The third spaces are spaces that are not school or home. They're places where we can gather, and they feel natural. They're low cost, they're low impact, and the produce stand is doing that really, really well. And that is why it is so popular. More often than not, when you go to the produce stand, you will have people who are from out of town. But a lot of us are Alpiners who are super excited to meet each other. I personally have said to my neighbors, "Hey, let's go down to the produce stand." And we go, and we buy ice cream, and we connect, and we have a great time. I think it's really important to note that the U.S. Census data that just came out about our children, our high schoolers in particular, was talking about how nine out of ten of them feel hopeless and sad almost ninety percent of the time. And as you heard in the very first comment that was shared, it's an identity factor to have a space like this in Alpine. And I'm sure you're thinking, "What does this have to do with amending the code?" The reality is, amending that code helps the produce stand to be more effective at what it's already doing. It's not going to create more traffic, and if it does, we have the ability to come back in here as a governing body, as a deciding body, to make more changes. We can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Three, two, one. Okay. Thank you, everybody. I think I just want to make sure everybody's had a chance to be heard or wants to be heard. Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Great comments, everybody, on both sides of the issue. Clark, before you sold that, frankly, I didn't think it was junky and tumbleweeds everywhere and everywhere else. So, I think they were talking about something else. It wasn't you, Clark. I saw it a couple of times, saying, "Wait a minute, I don't remember that." But no, for sure. Okay. Great. Thanks, everybody. Okay. So, a lot of good input. And again, appreciate community involvement, excellent discussion. And it's not just for us, but also, you know, what we will end up doing is making a recommendation to the city council, who will, hopefully, if they're watching, watch this meeting and listen to all the comments that were made on both sides of this, and then also our discussions and deliberations. And one, yeah, just one comment. Andrew, I certainly did not mean to, you know, offend you or make a scene either. So, yeah, there you go, brother. We can chat later if we need to. Thanks. Okay. So, we have the application in front of us, and just let's open it for discussion. Just head on a swivel.
I thought there's a lot of good discussion and points that were brought up. I think with regards to preserving open space, the orchard and what Paul and Derek have done can't be matched in any other project that we have in our community. I think they have been good stewards. I think we've dealt with some very serious issues, and they've done it in a very, or they've managed it in a very proactive way. I think that they recognized our concerns about zoning and, on their own volition, removed those things that were most upsetting to those requests. As I've thought about the things that they want to add to the things that they sell, I think what they're trying to do is increase their units per transaction, not increase the number of transactions. And that's relevant, because I really don't think it will increase any traffic. And if it does, it will probably be most felt during the non-peak seasons. My concern about selling prepared foods or preparing foods in the food stand or produce stand is the issues around turning it into a commercial kitchen, which I don't think is probably appropriate for a produce stand. So, we need to be careful of language that would introduce those issues. But I don't have a problem with having them bring additional items into the store, such as meat or baked goods, as long as they, those items are prepared in the proper environment that is approved and inspected by the appropriate governing bodies. So, those are my thoughts. So, I think if we were to, I think there's a little work that needs to be done on the language, but in general, I would approve, I would recommend we consider recommending approval.
John, what about? So, I just made some quick notes, right? I mean, flowers grown on, flowers, who cares? Dairy, we already allow dairy. Easy tweet there. Jams, preserves, seems to me those are already fruit or fruit byproducts. I mean, certainly.
My concern is food safety. I mean, it's just those kinds of things that all kinds of foodborne illnesses...
That's where you get to meat and baked goods, right? Like, is it commercial kitchen? What are your standards? Let me ask you real quick about farm merchandise, because I think that's, that was one of their terms.
I'm fine with it.
About seasonal household goods.
I'm fine with it. Okay.
All right. Thanks, John. Good input.
It's probably a good time for me to jump in. I agree with John. I feel the same way about it. I think, I think it kind of boils down to the, to traffic and what kind of, as I was thinking about this today, it's like, what products are going to keep people there? That's what my concern, because I think that's what causes the traffic, right? What keeps people there? So, maybe, you know, we ought to look at that. But, but I feel like, John, I mean, I love the fruit stand. I don't think it's going to, just repeat what John said. I don't think it's going to create additional traffic, you know? And I do believe it's a, you know, the people that come there are going to be able to buy stuff. And I love the vision of it. I mean, I, you know, I don't want it to turn into a store or anything, but I think just expanding that, you know, that little area with some of the things that, you know, we're talking about is appropriate.
I have two thoughts, just for you two to consider on that. I mean, you know, point, counterpoint. One of the, one of the requests is a request to amend the definition of fruit stand to, apparently, that you've got to have at least five acres to have a fruit stand. So, thoughts on that? Whether that's, I'm not sure what the purpose of that is, but that was included in this amendment. And then, second consideration, right? The Burgess Orchards produce stand doesn't operate in a vacuum. We will likely in the future, we can only anticipate that we will have others that have orchards, you know, like Ryan would know this, I don't know off the top of my head, but there are other orchards and maybe large, anyway, large plots within Alpine where perhaps an owner or a purchaser comes in and wants, also wants a, to operate a produce stand under a conditional use permit. Do you have any issues? Right, so, these are all issues pretty relevant to Burgess Orchards, but we don't amend ordinances for one user or one use. Any issues or thoughts that amending this statute as you proposed, are you fine with that having future application?
I mean, can't we take that case? I mean, we would take that case by case, though, right? And if it was inappropriate?
Well, I think you're changing the definition of a produce stand. And you're expanding it somewhat, so it's going to have future application to any other applicant. So, I'm just saying, are you okay with, with...
I mean, I think if it was in the proper area...
By expanding, expanding the definition of a produce stand, are you okay with a future applicant likewise selling all the things that Burgess Orchards is currently selling and also wants to sell that we've enumerated? You change the definition, and somebody else comes in, has a residential area, and wants to do the same thing.
Well, then, I would deny that. I would. I would, I would not support that in another area, if it was an inappropriate area, right? Am I not understanding it? Because, like, I think if it's...
It's going to apply, because they, you...
Yeah.
You can't, so, a future applicant, you can't come in and say, "Oh, well, you're in this area, so we're going to line out your eggs and your meat and..."
Oh, you can't just say, you can't, we can't, you can't deny it.
No, because if they meet the definition of the ordinance, you can't cherry pick the ordinance. So, I'm just saying that if you change the definition of what is a produce stand, then, and change it so that their conditional use permit, then, yeah, it's going to have future application to anybody else who wants to come in and do a produce stand. So, I just, I just, I'm not saying that that militates against it. I'm just saying that that's, you know, think that, you know, think about that. And I'm not, maybe it doesn't matter.
Was the five acre requirement new to the modified language?
Yes. So, in the, in the definition, it is. But in three point two three, which is conditional uses, and when we talk about produce stands, it says the property includes a minimum of five acres.
That's what I thought.
So, we've got, it would just be kind of redundant.
That's already self-governing.
All right.
Yeah. So, my point in response to your issue that you brought up is that we've, we've kind of already boxed it in. There's no one like these guys. They're going to go out and spend five, six million dollars or more so they can have a produce stand. I mean, those opportunities, you know, there might be people more stupid than them. Do that. I just don't know who they are.
Well, I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm just thinking, for example, like, I don't even know who owns it, but I'm thinking of the large orchard that's just north, northeast of the old elementary school.
Yeah.
So, what? Oh, that's you, Clark. Okay.
I guarantee a hundred percent they own the elementary school.
Well, that's, you know, but you won't always own the land.
Why don't you put the produce stand on your acres?
Well, hey, let's not, hey, hey, we can't have that happen. We can't have that devolve. But I'm just saying that, look, look, one day Clark will go the way, for example, one day Clark will go the way of all good people, and that property will go to Clark's children, right? Arguably. I don't know your family situation, but, so, maybe they keep it as, as an orchard and say, "Hey, we just want to keep, you know, doing, you pick apples and peaches and whatever else." Or maybe they'll develop it residentially, because it's probably in a CR forty thousand, right? Or they could say, "You know what? We got five-plus acres. Hey, let's, let's, let's do Burgess Orchards, too." And they could put one in right there.
And I wouldn't, and I wouldn't have a problem with that either.
Okay, that's, that's my only question.
We have, we have that self-governing requirement of having five acres.
Right.
And that, that limits the field of possibilities.
Right. So, you'd have to have five acres, so you would be okay in any, and again, this is not a rhetorical question or a confrontational question. You would just be fine with, yeah, look, they got five-plus acres, and they want to do the same offerings as Burgess Orchards? You're great with that. Because that's what, that's what amending the definition of produce stand would do. In lieu of, for example, and I'll just throw it out there, it wouldn't happen tonight, but in lieu of, for example, a, well, not a rezone, because you might have a situation where, for example, Clark's property is, does not sit in, in, it's not a commercial zone. So, it would, it could only ever be residential or some conditional use. So, I'm just saying that's all that could ever be. And so, just you would be fine then that, yep, operate, sell all the same things that Burgess Orchards, because I'm just saying, amending it has future application to anybody else. Okay. So, your thought is, hey, five acres is big enough that you really don't, you know, because, I mean, one thing that we accommodated for, I know there've been some comments that the city seems to be against them. It's actually been a hell of a lot of accommodating, including amending the off-site, you know, parking ordinance so that there was a path forward to solve the safety issue. So, yeah, I mean, I guess in that situation, you would just look at, well, what's your parking situation and, you know?
Can you address all the same things?
Okay. I want to see if you had thought through that.
Yeah. And Alan, on that, on the parking, we not only amended it, we then, the city council had to make an exception, because the parking stalls were, they set that two-hundred-foot limit, and then the parking stalls were further than the two-hundred-foot limit. So, not only did they amend the code, they made an exception to the code so that it was within the, so, so that was, you know, we have, we, the city has given a lot. My concern on adding, especially the prepackaged foods, pre-prepared foods, when you start talking hamburgers, hot dogs, breakfast sandwiches, and they say just breakfast sandwiches now, but hamburgers has been kicked around and, and with meat and agricultural products. And a lot of people to their, have said, "This is a great social gathering place, but it's a neighborhood first." And anytime anything big gets added, we feel it. Yes, the parking has been amazing on the front of Cascade, but to the detriment of some backyards on Cascade, especially mine and the DeGroot's. I mean, I'll be clear. We now have a parking lot and, and then Clark mentioned the library that is coming down the road, but anytime you add something, it takes, the pressure is going to, is expanding again up Bateman. So, when they opened U-Pick, it expanded up Bateman. The whole bricks felt it that she mentioned that. And, and so, it, any, the social media gal calling it a social gathering place, but it's not a park. It's not a restaurant. It's a neighborhood first. And so, some of these, we're fine adding this as a neighborhood to produce stand as long as we keep it in produce stand. But some of these things go well beyond that definition to the detriment of a neighborhood that lives there.
So, what would you, what would you, just out of curiosity, uh, what would you be in favor of amending the statute to add?
I would...
Not the statute, but the, the ordinance definition?
Well, the definite, pre-prepared food, agricultural products like meat, um, yeah, tri-tip in a sealed package is different than a hamburger stand. If we're talking hamburger and we're talking pre-prepared food, we're a restaurant, you know, they can go down on Main Street. That's, that's our commercial, but you're blurring the line.
Selling meat is selling packaged meat.
Well, but then they said breakfast sandwiches and then they talked about hamburgers. So, where are we at? Again, if we don't keep it tight.
It says preparation.
We're gonna have an expansion happening before our eyes. And so, I, I agree that we should tighten the language. I, I don't know if I'm ready tonight or all of us, or I don't know. We're trying to wrap our head around this because it came out at four o'clock and, you know, I, we looked at the package and then knew things coming out. I, I just think that, um, this is a big decision for a definition of a produce stand. Yeah, flowers, no problem. We can add, you know, things like that. Uh, you know, they can sell a hat. But things that cause them to stay, things that cause people to stay, to socially gather. Every time you add something that adds that, you're gonna add pressure on the parking. And they did not wanna add parking onto their lot when this all came up two years ago. They wanted it on the lot they purchased and pushed it further into the neighborhood. So, where's the next parking gonna come? If pressure's there.
Appreciate the input. Didn't, didn't you get your say-in?
I did, but I...
You got your pre-say-in.
No, no, she hasn't even started.
We all had an eighty-four packet, page of packet that we had to read for this, so we're all loopy. Okay, really, all of us, let's agree, the orchard is fabulous. What a blessing to have that stay. I mean, I, I am, I grew up on a farm. I love what, I love that it's there. I loved your dad. I, I, I'm just glad, glad that that all stayed. However, I think Chris Sutton, is that your, did I get that right? That was an excellent point. All of you made great points. It was so good. We are right in the middle of, we just told the person that wanted to do the, the changes over at the, at the art center, we better wait. We, I mean, I hate to do that. You guys have been, I know you feel like you're being patient. We feel like we're trying to still be accommodating.
Yeah, but that was, but that, but that was a rezone from residential to commercial.
Right, but it's still gonna change. Something could change with, with all of this. I think so. Okay, so what's, if that's not...
So, your point is until you get the city plan done, why don't you wait till the city plan's done?
I just know that's gonna throw some stuff. I don't, I mean, it's gonna throw some stuff off. Okay, I also, well, I don't wanna keep taking a bunch of stuff. I really love, I love the green space. I love, I do love gathering as well, but there does have, there's gonna be some...
Well, ju- just, sorry, I'm, I'm a little slow. Well, I mean, the gears are turning, but I mean, I, I suppose to your point, like, like, I don't know what the revisions to the master plan are coming down. I don't know if, for example, I mean, you, you can take all the properties south of the roundabout and kinda make four quadrants, right? Like, bait, like, like, imagine Bateman to the east and an imaginary Bateman to the west, right? Let's just make a line there. You have northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest. Burgess Orchards, at least on the, on, on, where it currently sits, the building, would be on that southeast quadrant. I mean, I have no idea what's coming, I, I have no idea if, if what the recommendation is going to be that comes to planning commission and ultimately up to city council includes that quadrant being, you know, whether those quadrants are all residential with a commercial overlay or not. I mean, at that, at that point, that does change the calculus for Burgess Orchards. So, you know, there, there is that. We're almost at the end of the season. So, I'm just saying there may, there is potentially a case to be made for either, either tabling to work on the language as, uh, you know, as, as almost all of us have mentioned, or also tabling because just about at the end of the season to see where, where the, where the zoning recommendations come down. So, okay, so it's a good point.
That's my point, because my other stuff is just, I feel like they're doing, you know, what they're doing now. I love the fresh flower thing, but you can do a lot of what they wanna do without expanding so much. I think we, it really does have the farmer's stand versus the produce thing. Where we're there now, just by adding a few other things, would, they'd be able to still accomplish the, the people gathering, whatever, and not have to have this huge expansion that feels more, so much more commercial.
Yeah, thanks, Seuss.
But, let's get some stuff, let's get our ducks in a row. That's my point.
Hundred percent.
First of all, Paul, thanks for calling me and thanks for all of you for being here. You guys have built a, a great business and it's good to see the citizens get together. My comments would be the same. We've got a city plan that's coming in in a couple of months. It'd be good to maybe wait for that. Concerns around the risk associated with the commercial kitchen, concerns about selling items that might, uh, promote, and I appreciate the third-party zone space or whatever relative to people needing to hang out and stuff, but people staying longer creating a bigger infrastructure and security problem. We got the language an hour before the meeting began in business. I've never read something, had a discussion and voted and made a decision on the language on the fly. Normally you sit, you think about stuff, you have the opportunity to have discussions, so I think that getting language and the language is influx up until the meeting's starting doesn't make sense. Concerned about extended hours, concerned about maybe the impact on the neighborhood with, uh, extended months if we sell more products. Is that, once again, clarity on the language is changing up until, so those are comments. And then, Paul, you and I talked, uh, I think that there's an opportunity from a, you look at the elasticity of your pricing, you look at your success in being able to market and sell. I think there might be other ways to, uh, sell product and make additional revenues without impacting Alpine City and still keep the brand and still keep things going and love to meet with you about that, uh, you know, offline. I think there's ways you can subsidize it. There've been several comments from people that love it, uh, from the standpoint of, you know, they like the, uh, gosh, where was my train of thought? I thought, I forgot the last point, sorry. That's the sixty-six-year-old Greg. Oh, gosh, there's one other key point. It was the most important one. I didn't write it down, so I forgot it. So, I'll come up with it. So, I'm just, I guess my comment would be, uh, to finalize the language and vote on it and make a proposal. I realize that city council needs to approve it, but I would probably promote that we, uh, deny it or we table it with the opportunity to walk through the language at a more detailed level. And I better understand what it means, because right now, I don't know that, uh, is it a commercial kitchen? Is it meat that's sold from, you know, a local Mapleton area or is it, we're preparing the meats? They're, I don't know.
Sixty-six. I thought you were forty-six. I haven't gotten past that. Was your, was your comment something along gathering space?
I think there's benefits of gathering space, but not at the expense of safety and traffic and ruining neighborhoods, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
I'll come up with it soon as I go.
Good, thanks, Greg. Jeff, anything to say? You've been quiet over there? You don't have to.
No, uh, I, I appreciate all of the citizens coming. I mean, that's fantastic. And I appreciate the success and I appreciate, and I recognize, uh, how popular it is amongst our citizens and outside of our city. I just try to simplify the situation here and, you know, I was during the discuss, before tonight, during the discussion today, you know, was like adamantly saying, "We're denying this." But I do like the idea of the planning commission retaining some control. And by tabling it, we retain that control, because then it comes back to us instead of just going to what some people have told me, a, a, a partially lame duck city council. But I, I think it's, I think it's important to know that, uh, it's important, what we're, what are we talking about? We're talking about changing a definition. That's what's, and I, I recognize, you know, we've, over the years, talked about the safety and the parking and, but it's, we're talking about one thing, and that is the definition of a produce stand. And the, at these changes do not fit, in my opinion, anywhere close to the definition of a produce stand. Okay? What we're, what we're trying to do is we're, to me, we're trying to say, "We wanna change the, the definition of a produce stand to be a grocery store or a, a commercial store." And, and that's different. That is different than a produce stand. Now, we could say, "Oh, well, we're just gonna accept these things and we're gonna suss out what is part of our produce stand and what's not, you know? Is the baked goods, is the merch part of a produce stand or not?" You know, so we could suss that out. And I, I do think, you know, I like the idea of us maintaining control, getting the master plan and, and figuring that out. The fact that we're at the end of the season, that gives us time to talk about that and work that out and work that out with the owners and come up with something. But, you know, my feeling is they're gonna be, they're gonna continue to be successful. Could they be more successful? Yes. But that really requires that there be zoned, commercial and have a commercial, uh, commercial business. Because it's, it goes beyond what a definition, my definition of what a produce stand is. And tonight, what we're talking about, what's on the, what's on the thing here is not the conditional use permit or changing that. That's all of, is, do we want to change the definition of a produce stand? And what does that, and what does that mean? And if it was just cut flowers, great. Okay, we can do that. But, but I, 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 I guess where I'm leaning to tonight is maintaining control and, and tabling this and come back. And then, we can have a little bit better of the vision of what is supposed to be our vision, you know, and we can debate that. And, but, that's, that's kinda where, um, I think, you know, I agree with what Troy said, well, Michelle's, John, I, I agree with all of those things. But what we're really looking at is, are we changing the definition tonight and recommending to the city council, change the definition of a produce stand? Which basically becomes a store. Becomes a mini Macy's or mini Myers. I mean, I look at it as a mini Myers.
I think the term is a farm store.
Yeah, so...
Okay, yeah, good thoughts. Thank you, Jeff. Greg, you remembered.
Very succinct. You said it better than anybody. Mine wasn't a comment, it was more a question. Uh, we've alluded to the fact that, uh, the option is to have residential homes there and the trees are gonna be taken away. I don't know if that's a plan, so if we don't change the definition, is a fruit stand gonna cease to exist? Are we gonna put residential homes there? I have four acres. I don't, I don't intend to divide it. Is the fruit stand going away if we don't change the definition? Yeah, I just, because there've been several comments that this is better than, uh, housing, but I don't know that your intent is to actually change if we don't change the definition, I guess what I'm trying to get at.
No, I, I'm not gonna come up here and say that, like, I have, I have this other plan to change or anything like that. I think the spirit of the comment is just that we think it's a really great thing that we've been able to preserve the orchard. I think what we're asking for is a little trust and appreciation of the fact that it's a very expensive thing to do and we're not really running this store to, you know, it's, it's not like a truly profitable thing and we would appreciate some reciprocity and, and Greg, I think, being able to do some things that might be uncommon in a residential zone. But then again, I, as John said, I don't think there are a lot of other people looking at this level of money to preserve an orchard or, or to sell pheasants or pheasant spread or bread sandwiches. And, uh, and that's sort of our, you know, our ask of the city.
Greg, it was me who said it, and I'm just saying, I would personally debate whether I should just sell this land because I can't apparently run a business, so I might as well take money off. I was speaking out myself on the location.
So, Tyler, you were the troublemaker?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha, alright.
Did I coach you in Little League football?
No.
Who's your brother?
Yeah, probably my brother.
Alright, I was gonna say you were a troublemaker back then too. That's why you're a linebacker.
No, and I'm thinking I, I coached a Hoag boy in, in, in youth football. Okay, alright, thank you. So, yeah, my, my brief thoughts and then let's, let's kinda wrap things up. So, um, you, you know, I, I, I thought, I thought, you know, interestingly, our, our very first, you know, commentator who, you know, had to go study for midterms, Lily, was, uh, you know, a bright bulb and, and said some really interesting things. So, you, you know, basically, one was, you know, she mentioned that it's just become so much more than a fruit stand. And, yeah, I mean, it has. It's become kind of a lot more, Clark, than, than what you did. And, and, you know, honestly, Derek and Paul, good on you. The problem is that you're operating under a conditional use permit on a residential parcel. And that's a little bit in flux. I, I, I honestly, I haven't seen a draft. I don't know what's coming down. Ultimately, there's gonna be a whole lot of debate through planning commission and city council on that. And that may change things for you guys, would be, you know, a much easier path for a commercial piece of property. So, I mean, that, but that's up in the air, maybe, maybe not. I think honestly what you're running is a farm store versus a produce stand. And that's pretty clear as well, and, and I think somebody mentioned that, well, we've been to this, we've been to this place and this place and those farm stores, they're so cute. Well, absolutely, they're farm stores and they sit on commercial pieces of property. This is a conditional use on a residential piece that's got neighbors and neighborhoods all around. And I know you guys have done a good job working with the neighbors, trying to forge compromises, so kudos to you there. And again, beautiful building, love everything you've done, um, coming into Alpine, I mean, a- as a commercial, quasi-commercial slash commercial application, so much better than a lot of other things that, that we could have. And so, to that end, I think really, and I think you guys would, would agree with this, yeah, there's been some friction between, you know, some of your applications, then through planning commission, through city council, but there have also been a lot of work and compromise on the part of the city to, to help solve the problems that have been created by the success of what you've done. And so, and, and again, all of Alpine loves, and even outside of Alpine, loves coming and, and patronizing the fruit stand. It comes at a bit of a cost to the neighbors in and around the area. I think you would, you would admit to that, but you've also done some things to try and mitigate that. I think John raises some really, you know, good quest, or, or just not questions, but good thoughts with respect to, and, and again, you know, that, you're, you're a successful, you know, CEO and entrepreneur for a reason. But I don't remember the term you actually used, but, but, you know, somebody comes and buys one thing versus somebody comes in and buys three things, it's still the same customer. You said it more succinctly and articulately than that, but it was basically the concept. There you go, there you go. So, you know, just thinking about, about your ways forward, right? One is, is to amend the definition of a produce stand. And Jeff talked about that, and, and the reality is, like, so that is one way to do it. Jeff, you kinda talked about, like, well, they're just going so far beyond a produce stand. Really looking at our definition again, our definition of what a produce stand already goes well beyond the definition of, definition... the definition, definition of a produce stand. We got eggs and dairy and
Yogurt.
Butter and yogurt, beef jerky and whatever else we have in there, right? I mean, things that, again, you kinda might find in, in, you know, a farm store. So, some of the things that, right, I mean, flowers, that'd be great, right? I mean, fixing the definition of dairy, hey, that would be great. Jams, preserves, I don't think anybody has an issue with that. Bottle, you know, bottles and canning things, I don't know that anybody really has an issue with, you know, those things. Seasonal, I mean, some merch. I think we get into murky, murkier areas with where are we on meat? Prepared meats, packaged meats, raw meats? Are we cooking? Do you have to have a commercial kitchen? Are there grease separators? There's a whole lot of things there that, to Jeff's point, I mean, we had a packet and then we had an amended packet. And then like two or three hours before the meeting, we even had a third one. And we sat and spent half an hour trying to figure out what's actually before us. And I'm not even sure that we know. So I'll wrap mine up with just saying that, you know, I, I was probably like you, Jeff and others, feeling like, you know what, we got a definition, a produce stand is a produce stand and you've been operating successfully, people come, they love it, all the people, all the things that people say they love about the produce stand, they love that as you operate within your current conditional use permit. And you're probably outside it a little bit with ice cream. It's not really a grandfathered thing, but nobody's raising issues with it. So, you know, but, but to that end, you know, maybe we tighten it up to include what, what's actually being offered. So I think I would probably echo some comments that we've made, which would, which would be, hey, I wouldn't mind taking some time and perhaps based on some comments that have been made tonight, that, that Derek and Paul, you guys work with Ryan, and I, you know, I wouldn't mind being a part of that. Maybe Jeff, maybe anybody on here, maybe grab a couple of people off Planning Commission that might be a, you know, a part of that so that ultimately we figure out a compromise and a good tight statute or ordinance that we can, that, that works for Burgess Orchards and also works for future applicants. And also, and also the neighbors, right? It's something that the neighbors can work with where it, look, as business guys, you can sell a few more things to that individual customer. But, you know, we're not necessarily bringing more traffic. And I don't know that we're gonna sit and require you to do a traffic study and other things, like if it was an actual commercial rezone, we would do so. You know, anyway, my very long-winded way, as usual, of saying, I think that, uh, you, you know, there is some wisdom to tabling this, bringing back as quickly as you can bring it back, you know? I mean, I don't know when we meet again, Ryan, but, you know, a much tighter amendment to the current definition of produce stand. So my thoughts there.
So you're talking independent of any master plan?
Well, you know, that's actually a good question, I think, for Derek and Paul because, you know, on the one hand, if, if you did end up with a commercial overlay, and that's gonna happen well before the season starts, right? In, you know, your season next year. This should be to us in the next six to eight weeks, from what I understand, Ryan. So if, if that went through over the next two to three months through Planning Commission, Paul and City Council, and that southeast quadrant, I'm making that up, ended up with a commercial overlay, well, you got a much easier pathway forward.
Exactly.
So I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, thanks, Alan. Thanks for giving the chance to get along with that. You know, I think in this process of, of talking, we've spent a lot, a lot of time on this. And I think we have made every effort to refine the definition to a place where we can give us eighty percent of the things we're hoping to be able to do, but not push all the way to commercial. Sometimes about worrying what we would sell it, you know, get hit by a bus and all sorts of things that happen. And, uh, and I think, uh, whatever happens with that plan is not our intention to take, take any initiative on changing zoning. So, you know, if someone else wants to do that, if city wants to do that, you know, we, we will plan to do the same thing. But as I said earlier, you know, it's, it's my great hope that we can, uh, resolve this issue and, uh, you know, uh, all of us can spend more time in tight meetings with the families. I think a lot of people are taking a lot of time to be here today on both sides. And I think just in, in respect to that and in respect to the fact that I think it is ultimately City Council's authority to decide on this issue, I think it feels inappropriate to me to just say we're gonna appeal this because we don't, you know, we don't want City Council to decide. And from our perspective, you know, we would, we would ask for an up or down vote on the definition of the grid in it, just because
Well, I would clarify, just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead. Okay. Well, I would just clarify that, that nobody said that they didn't ever want this to go to City Council. Of course, that will go to City Council, but like, I, I, I don't know that we're gonna sit here after four hours of a meeting with one item left and try to now essentially rewrite or write up an ordinance. Because what, basically what was presented to us is I don't think it's workable for anybody on this commission. I don't know, I'm not even sure exactly where we ended up on the language, if it's this very final one, wherever that is. So, I mean, look, part of that, part of that is frankly on you guys, because you dropped on us the final version of this amendment, literally like, like some of our people didn't have a chance to look at it. And so I, you know, I, I mean, I, I think that's a, nobody's saying that we don't want this to go up to City Council. Of course, it's gonna go to City Council. But, I mean, you wanted up and down vote on an ordinance. It's got a proposed ordinance, an amendment, it's got a lot of problems with it that half the people on this commission never even got a chance to look at. That's a big ask.
Do you think, do you propose to deny it or do you propose to change it, like, do you have other, other applications? And I did hear Jeff say, you know, something about a plain Jeff City Council, and he asked me, why is that appropriate?
Well, this, this body also has a right to table if we feel like we don't have enough information before us or a solid, you know, a well-written amendment before us, which we clearly don't have. And so we have every right to table something if we feel like that's the best thing to do. And that's not because anybody wants to keep it from going to City Council. We of course want this to go to City Council, and it will go to City Council. But part of what we do is provide a good, tight ordinance amendment to City Council. We have anything but that right now. You would admit that.
Uh, I, I don't actually agree.
Okay, well, you have something you wrote. You have something you wrote that we have had very little chance to even wrap our heads around. Because you provide, normally these are provided to the city two weeks before. And then Ryan provides, gets them over to us, you know, typically on a Friday, and we have multiple days to look at it. This is the first time I can remember where there was amendment like this or, or an, an ask of this nature literally dropped on us the afternoon of Planning Commission.
To your credit, the reason I think that happened was you were talking to the, the neighbors. And it's Derek or Darren? Derek, you know, I appreciate what you said, that even up until the last few minutes, you had, I think you said fifteen calls or fifteen discussions or something. So, so give you credit for listening. So thank you for doing that. I think it's, I don't think we're pointing fingers. I think we're just saying that I didn't see it until we sat here.
Yeah, I just, I just think that, you know, it is, I, I hear that, I think that the application submitted two weeks ago was substantially the same in spirit and that, you know, the major things we're asking for are similar. We dropped some things from the application and we added hats and shirts. And that's, you know, we mostly dropped things though that, that neighbors were especially concerned about. It doesn't feel to me that that's that complicated. And a lot of us, a lot of people in this room have spent a lot of time here. And, uh, and I don't know if we, you know, we wanna do this again in two weeks. But it just seems like we, we have a lot of information for us. And if the commission wants to make, uh, you know, wants to approve or recommendations, that is of course, uh, you know, your prerogative. If you wanna deny it, that is of course your prerogative. But I think if you're asking, you know, hey, if we came back in two weeks, what language would we submit? We would submit exactly the same language because that, you know, we've spent so many hours refining that language. Derek has spent, you know, all of a sudden a evening with a lot of our neighbors working on this. And, um, you know, I, I, I think that deserves to be voted on.
So, um, when does your, when does your season end with, with your business?
Uh, we, we have approximately nothing left to sell that we're allowed to do. Uh, we would like to be able to sell some more things, so if approved, we will be able to start doing that. If not, then we'll be closed.
Well, but you're effectively at the end of the season, so I guess I'm one, I just don't really understand why there's such a, a, a rush when you're asking us to, you know, up or down vote, in your words, on an ordinance or language that we literally just got a couple hours before this meeting. I mean, why, why does it, why is there a rush? Why can this not be, you know, reviewed by us again two weeks from now or whenever we meet again?
Uh, my answer to that is what I said, which is I think people here have spent a lot of time. I don't think that we should expect the citizens about wanting to spend this much time on, you know, like, if we take a step back, what are we really talking about here? It's like, it is like a small, family-run business, very family-friendly business, you know? As Andrew said, we're not selling cigarettes. I, I think the issue is, you know, it's, it's a family-run, small business, family-friendly. As I said, you know, I, I, when I was leaving San Francisco, I tried deliberately to move to a place that had the most opposite values in America. And here I am, you know, in like hour, I can't even count how many hours I've spent negotiating the finer details of whether we can sell sourdough bread or breakfast sandwiches at a produce stand that I think ninety-nine percent of people in the city love. And that to me is, is crazy. And I would just hope that after we've all spent this much time, we can try to bring it to some high-level.
Yeah, Paul, I, I agree that it is crazy. I agree that it's crazy. But the reason why you have a seven-member panel here that makes a recommendation on changing code, that, that's our job. And, and, and there's a reason why that exists. And I, I agree, it is crazy. And I don't want to be, I don't wanna be an impediment of, you know, of the success. But we have, we have code and, and, and we have zones. And, and we're already stretching the current zone. And we're, we've already been to, to, to be accommodating. And do, you know, I, I think the best, in my opinion, is that your area becomes commercial. And it probably will. And I don't know when, you know? I don't know when, but that's, that's probably going to happen. And, you know, and, and, but maybe it won't. I'm just giving you my, my opinion. And, and if your area, if you're, if it was a commercial area now, all of these hours, that would be moot because you would have that ability. You would have that ability. And, you know, and so that's why I kinda, that's why I kinda made that point of, we're trying to expand and expand and expand a particular definition just to, to fit when really it should, we should be looking at it, you know, we should be treating it as a commercial, a, a, you know, a commercial thing that, that gives you all of that flexibility.
And we're not trying to be hard. In all fairness, you knew what you had when you, you know, when you, when you were in residential to be able to do this, those were the, the things you had to do. We didn't come up with that. That's been on the books. We're just trying to do what we are supposed to do. And so I don't feel like we're trying to, I, I don't, I can see where you'd be frustrated. You're putting in the time. We go through and we're studying stuff all the time to try to keep up so that, so that everything runs well. That's how a city runs. Nobody can just open this and open that and do whatever they want. It'd be a mess. So we're just trying to stick to the stuff that we have on the books. And then you knew that when you did it. And so if you wanna expand, that's great. I feel like we've tried to be accommodating to that. We're not trying to push you down the road at all. We just wanna be, we're actually trying to be ahead of what's coming a little bit.
Well, yeah, thanks, Susan. And honestly, Paul, I'll just, I'll just make one final comment. And then, you know, I don't wanna keep you up there forever, which is, I mean, everybody on this commission sat, I mean, said that we would like to work on this language and amend it in a way that works for you. So that we can send this up with good, tight language and with a recommendation for approval. But I, and that's pretty much what I heard from this whole commission. Then I, what I heard from you is, well, I don't, I don't wanna wait two or three weeks. I'd rather you sent it up to City Council with what would be a recommendation for denial. Why would you rather have a recommendation for denial, you know, go up than a recommendation for approval? I certainly think I would want the latter. And for all the time you've spent, why don't you give us, you know, why, why can't we spend several weeks to do that? And take that up in our next meeting, which we won't have, we won't have another public hearing, right? We don't have another public hearing. It'll just, you know, it'll just be us and the language will be decided on. And it's probably a fifteen-minute item. And, and from what I'm hearing from most of my fellow members, it's, you know, tighten up the language and make it work. And it's likely a unanimous or near-unanimous recommendation for approval. I would, you know, I'm not gonna ask you the question. I would just think you would want that. If you don't, that's kinda surprising, but anyway. Well, I think that's what you heard you'd probably get if we had, you know, a little bit more time to look at the issue and the language.
I think what, what I've heard is that there are, there are different opinions about which of the things, uh, you think we should or shouldn't be able to sell. And I think what, what I'm really hoping to get a vote on ultimately from the governing body, the City Council, is just the things that, I think there will be some gap between, you know, I think the things we've already slimmed down to. I think the things that can get a unanimous vote from this body. And for that gap of things, I think either way, whether we're bringing it now or in two weeks or two months, is, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a gap of things there because I, I know how much time we've already spent thinking about which things we really care about having the flexibility to experiment with. And that's, I'm saying, you know, there's, there's no, no feedback we could take. But again, we have put a lot of time, thought this isn't something that we've voted. And we removed some things at the last minute that neighbors had concerns about that were not very important to us. But what's left of the definition of our things, we really would like flexibility to put to sell. Understand that maybe not everybody here would support that. And that's why I think there's a great option to approve, you know, recommend approving it up. Those things, City Council can decide, you know, maybe, uh, maybe John likes me and Greg doesn't like me. And that's okay. I think that's fine. We're all entitled to our feelings. But I think ultimately, the governing bodies, the City Council, may even decide, you know, if they wanna approve the slimmed-down version or the version as we asked for. But I, you know, I think we have, from our perspective, done a lot of slimming. We started from the commercial rezone application, which to Jeff's point, wouldn't allow us to do anything. And I think it is in some ways more logical. Um, I totally hear where that perspective is coming from. But I also know that, you know, no matter what the general plan says, like, nothing changes about, you know, what's physically there or the fact that the neighbors are there, how the neighbors feel about the situation. And so at the end of the day, whatever the, the plan is, or whether you call it a produce stand or a farm stand or its own commercial or its own residential, I mean, the crux of the issue is like, we would like to be able to sell this additional set of things as we presented. And we'd like to know if the city is willing to approve that, yes or no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Or?
I, I just had a thought.
Yep.
I, I can't remember an instance where we've had an individual or citizen or petitioner write our ordinance for us and say, take it or leave it. Or even take, or even take it. I mean, I mean, usually it's staff working with, with the applicants to come up with language, which I assume is kind of what we've done here. But it sounds to me like the language we're looking at is their language.
So usually, usually we don't get residents that change code like this, right? Like it's a rezone or different things that way. So, yeah, they, they proposed this to us. We, we kinda looked at it, had some feedback, thoughts, everything's that way, but, yeah.
But it really hasn't gone through a filter, like we've, we've deliberated here tonight.
To a point, yes. We've looked at it as staff, and that's, that was in your staff report, some of the, some of the things that we looked at and just had some thoughts on, but.
But, but the language was their.
Originally proposed from them, yep.
That was version one, as opposed to version two that came in this afternoon.
Still, still their authorship.
Yes.
Okay. So I, I don't have a problem at all taking the time, whatever time is needed, to make sure that the language works for the city of Alpine. And whether that's a group of us or whether it's just Ryan and city staff taking the feedback, you've heard us, our comments here from the Planning Commission, and tightening it up and maybe running it past us and having some level of agreement and then presenting it without a lot of debate in our next meeting. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I, sorry, Alan, is it, uh, yeah, I would just, if, if that's what you wanna do, if you end up tabling it, I would just say include in there points. And it doesn't have to be, you know, we want this, this and this, but just give us some, obviously we'll go back and look at the meeting minutes and go through all. obviously, we'll go back and look at the meeting minutes and go through all this and have fun reliving this again. But, um, uh, if we could just have some feedbacks and thoughts, these are some of the general things that we agree on that want to, we want to see in there, we don't want to see in there, that would, I think that'd be really helpful on our end.
We can do that.
Do you have any more copies? I didn't have.
Well, I mean, yeah, I. Yeah, I, I mean, John, to your point, I, I just go to the most recent one they said where it talks about five acres of land. But that doesn't even need to be in the definition of produce stand because that, to your point, there's just, and then in addition to the products grown on those five-plus acres, I mean, like, I'm just, I'm just not going to sit here tonight and rewrite this thing.
Right.
Because it's not how Ryan would have presented it to us.
Right now, saying, we don't care about the five acres.
Yeah, because, because some of this stuff would have not even been in here. So anyway, your point's well taken. All right, we've, we've talked this, this, you know, into the ground. So, um, I'll, I'll take a motion unless anybody wants to make, and there's further discussion.
I'll make a motion that we table the definition, re-defining the definition for a produce stand, giving direction to, to city staff to come up with more complete language that allows for the sale of fresh-cut flowers, dairy, packaged meats, shirts, hats, and other merchandise, um, canning supplies. In terms of baked goods, I, I would like to have you work on what that looks like. I don't mind baked goods. I don't know that home baked goods work, and I don't think baked goods, uh, prepared on-site work. So as long as we can have any prepared foods, um, identified as prepared in an inspected, uh, commercial kitchen that's supervised by the appropriate regulatory body. So that's, that's probably the, the one item that probably needs the most, uh, figuring out. Uh, did I, did I include everything? Yeah, prepackaged meats, fine.
That's where you need to tighten it up.
Yeah.
Because I don't know what it means.
The, yeah, the, the question, John, is what, what, what's your intent by mentioning specific things in your table motion? What, what's your intent there?
To give direction to Ryan.
Okay.
To develop language.
Okay.
That provides a tight definition that we can all agree to and that meets the needs of the produce stand.
We just don't want to waste time, Jeff. If they, if there's certain things you guys don't want in there, I don't want to waste time spending time on trying to put that in there. If you guys say, if John in his motion could say, these are the things that we, then it gives us kind of some, which, an area to go. Yeah, this is great. Yep, this is, yep.
Marla, did you get that?
She's probably gone home.
I don't think she's, yeah, she's, she's. She will get it.
Well, is it, I'm not even sure it's being recorded anymore.
We're recorded, so that was, that was just different, yeah, we're still on YouTube, we're.
Yeah, I, I mean, to, to John's point, it's, I, I, I'm still, I, I, there are, there are definite food handling and, you know, sanitary requirements around meat, preparing meat, selling meat, preparing food for consumption, baked goods, all those things. And that's nowhere, that, that's nowhere in what was presented to us. I don't know, you know, I, none of us know what, what really can be sold in a quasi-farm store slash produce stand. You know, under this conditional use. And so, I mean, there's just some research that needs to be done with, with respect to, I know what they want, but I, I don't, I don't know what that reasonably, like grease separators, you know, there's just, it's just, just a, a lot of stuff thrown at us last minute that we, we don't, we, we don't have the knowledge base to know what that is. And it hasn't been researched and has been presented to us in a, in a tight ordinance. So anyway, all, I think, all the things that John said and, you know, supplemented, so.
I would add to it that we get it in enough time that we can review it and understand it versus hours before we have to make a decision.
Well, that wasn't a Ryan issue, so, um, okay, so, um, John.
That's my motion.
All right, so that was John's motion. Um, I think it was reasonably understandable, Marla can tighten it up. Uh, do we have a second?
Suck it.
Okay, we have a second, uh, by Greg Butterfield. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six ayes and one nay by Jeff Davis. Okay, uh, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It's been a long night. Thanks for coming, appreciate your input.
Get in here. Come here, Ken.
I'm just going to ask, I know, I'm going to ask Ryan this. Oh.
Ken.
Well, we still have one more item.
Yeah, we do, but.
Let's plow through the last one, Alan.
What?
Let's plow through that last one, get out of here, man. Or, or not, I don't know, what is it? What's it, what is the last one?
Well, it's, it's, somebody's actually here.
Yeah, what is the last one?
Yeah, uh-huh. Yeah, 'cause, 'cause honestly, like, like despite what you might think, I mean, what, it's great what you guys are doing. It's just, it, it puts us in, and you just.
It's going to come together, it's just hard, we just keep changing things.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, what else?
Yeah. No, I, I mean, honestly, Derek, we're just bending over backwards to make it.
We still have one more gen item, sorry, no, it's not.
And applicants in the future. And, and man, it like, if, honestly, if it was anything but all of a sudden baked goods and meat and what kind of meats is it, whatever else, we'd already can try to plow through it tonight.
Alan.
But it's just.
We, we, we still have one more item.
Yeah. There's too many layers and, and so.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have to have a public hearing to change the code. So then you go two weeks out for a public hearing post.
Yeah.
So that's really slows it down. And, and most of us, and most of the neighbors are okay.
Yeah, yeah. I think getting it right is the thing to do.
Alan.
I just think getting it right is the thing to do, right? I mean, I just think, you know, I mean.
A- a- Alan.
I loved what Paul said.
A- Alan? Alan McDonald? Paging Alan McDonald, paging Alan McDonald. We still have, we still have one more i- item.
I'm happy to work with you guys and Ryan, but, and, because honestly, we'd love to send you out of here with a, a, a near unanimous or near unanimous.
I was feeling sad, I'm like, dude, I didn't get any, I didn't get the voice mail, what the heck? I feel, you know, that's okay.
Well, I love the way, I, I love your thinking. This is all on me. I was waiting too long to get people.
We still have, we still have an item.
I know, I know, can we do it? Yeah, we're not done. Do we need to do that?
Yeah.
We can probably plow through this in like quick, can't we?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, hey, Michelle, Michelle, we're not done. Oh, you gotta go? Well, you can't, we have four of us, and we need to go. Yeah, yeah, exactly, right. No, I love that.
I need my husband to put my suit in.
I love your thoughts. Thanks, I appreciate you.
I told him, we still have one more item. I know. I'm really sorry, Marla, I tried to keep them going.
Well, I know, so I made it and I, it needs to go in the fridge with two cups. Okay, hold on.
You like that? We have a set of breaking records. We're not done yet. Because of this, we'll give you two weeks off. Oh, good, I brought you my fifty bucks. Sure.
Contact pay, exactly.
Every Wednesday morning, I go, what's the definition of hazard pay? Did I meet that this week? Four and a half hours.
No, no, I, I struggle with that as well.
No, that was me texting back and forth, yeah, no. Anyway, let's go. I'm really sorry.
We've got to get Alan out of here.
No, no, that, 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 that ship has sailed, that ship has sailed. Okay, Ryan.
Yep, this is going to be world record fast. So, so every time we get a rezoned to a business commercial, the issue is this could also be quarter-acre residential because that's allowed in our, in our business commercial as a permitted use if it's in a, a recorded subdivision, a conditional use if it's, if it's not. So, uh, in conversations with the mayor and a couple city council members, this was something we've looked at, taking those residential uses out of the business commercial zone. Uh, if you have a home, if you're, have a residential use in the business commercial zone, it's legal non-conforming, you can go on for time and all eternity as that single-family or as a, as a use. Uh, there is, if you ever wanted to expand your house or do other things like that, there's, there's an avenue to do that as well. Uh, the second part of this is it creates a overlay zone similar to the senior housing that we just went through. So if someone did want to rezon a business commercial zoned lot to use residential, they go through the rezon process and then they, they can have up to quarter-acre lots. Yeah, that's, that's really it, public hearing, all that fun stuff. This really just trying to make it so that if, if someone comes in with a business commercial and they want to rezon the business commercial, it's for business uses, not with a threat of, well, they could also have quarter-acre lots. So that's the problem we're trying to solve with this and, and create a way that, uh, can do that. Approve.
And if we had a problem with that before?
So just every time someone comes in with a business commercial rezon, it's always, it's always, yes, this is what they want to do, but if this doesn't work, they could always have quarter-acre lots, especially in kind of the southern end where it's one acre, half acre lots, that's, that's a, a bigger change than. If someone comes in, it's another, if it's a other residential, like if someone's CR forty thousand, they want to be twenty thousand, it's very black and white, they want smaller lots. With this, it's anything in the business commercial, but also they could have single-family homes that are quarter-acre lots essentially, ten thousand square foot lots. So it just, just to remove that, that fear and then. Yeah, yeah. Uh, we've also, like I said, created that overlay zone. We could also, as I was looking at this, we could also just take the commercials or the residential stuff out and say you just apply for a rezon to whatever residential is closer. That, that makes it difficult if you're more in the middle of, of Main Street here, if there was ever some.
Sure.
But, um, that's a, that's a simple way we could address it as well.
Do you need to talk to us?
Uh, yeah, well, I think we just need to.
Ken just likes planning commission.
So, so, hey, I, well, yeah, I mean, okay, thank you. Any questions for Ryan before we open up the public hearing? Because we have to have a public hearing. Okay, uh, let's go ahead and, and, uh, open up the public if anybody wants to make a comment. Andrew, come on, it's your shot, brother.
Was that a deep fake?
Okay. Um, all right, so, uh, all right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing then. All right, discussion on the, uh, the item. Okay.
I got it right here.
Got it.
Motion to recommend approval of a proposed amendment to the business commercial zone to remove residential dwellings as a permitted or conditional use and to create an overlay zone for single-unit dwellings within the B C zone.
Second.
Oh, yeah, okay, we got a motion from Sue's. Yeah, man, my brain went to sleep there for a minute. Uh, wait, I have a second from John McKay. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, let the record reflect a unanimous. All right, uh, any communications by anybody? You know, please, Lord, no.
Alan, who seconded that?
Jo- John McKay.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Marla's still here, wow. Good on you, Marla. Thank you.
My, my only thing, no meeting on the fourth, it's election night for those who celebrate. Um, so we'll meet on the fourth, we won't meet until the eighteenth, and then, uh, yeah, we'll just, we'll just go from there. We'll just live one month at a time.
Okay, sounds good.
And as far as communications, is there any way to get stuff earlier? I mean, tonight, that was my biggest concern.
No, it's, it's our biggest concern too. Uh, as long, so they, with that one, we, we usually don't have an issue just with that one. Just submitting stuff last minute. We, I've talked down about this, we notice it as a, as a, um, amendment to the definition. So in my mind, it was, let's get you guys the latest up-to-date so we're not looking at this and they're going, well, we're going off this and you guys are going off this. So they. No, no, and like I said, we just, we're trying to get it out as fast as we can. They dropped it off, uh, on Monday, we needed time to review. We needed time to review it. We had other meetings that we were in, so that was as soon as we could, as we could get it out, but.
I had concerns whether that was appropriate notice to the public to digest it for a public hearing, but Ryan said that wasn't. At least it wasn't an issue as far as have, you know, like, like a defective notice issue, but it certainly was, you know, put us behind the eight ball, so.
Well, it was currently, it was.
But, yeah, that was, that was not a city issue. That was an applicant issue. Okay.
Kind of interrupt, they wanted to do a special thing. I don't think that was helpful either, right?
No, we talked about that.
Same to you, yeah, yeah.
So that kind of sucked out.
Okay. Any other communications? Otherwise, anybody review the, the minutes and like to make a motion.
Motion to approve minutes from.
Okay.
October seventh.
October seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes from Greg. Do we have second?
Second.
Second from Suze. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
That might be a record.
That is a record. There's no way. Four and a half hours. We had a bunch of open meetings.
Oh, my God.